Well, it's 6:31. I know we got a lot to talk about tonight, so I'm gonna call to order the Royal Oak City Commission meeting for March 22nd, 2021. Uh, we're gonna start with a roll call. Uh, Mike Fournier dialing in from Royal Oak, Michigan. Commissioner Prush?
Here from Royal Oak, Michigan.
Commissioner Douglas?
Here, Royal Oak.
Commissioner Colo?
I'm here, Royal Oak.
Commissioner Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here in Royal Oak.
And Commissioner Dubac?
I'm Royal Oak.
All right, um, there's been a request to adjourn to closed session, uh, to discuss, um, an employee evaluation for the city manager and also some tiny attorney-client privileged information. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second?
I'd like to hear the motion.
Oh, Commissioner Douglas?
Yes, uh, yeah, I moved to enter closed session to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of the city manager who has requested a closed hearing, and to consider a written attorney-client communication from the interim city attorney, which is exempt from discussion or disclosure by Section 131G of the Freedom of Information Act.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, there's a second. Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on the motion?
I just want to thank Commissioner Douglas for being so precise with that.
Very precise language. All right, well, we'll start with the motion maker, Commissioner Douglas.
Yeah, it's a gift. Aye.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yeah.
I vote yes, we will adjourn for closed session, returning at approximately 7:30, uh, to resume the normal part of our meeting. So, um, Ms. Schwanger, uh, Mr. Wilson, just let us know when we're, um, in closed session. Thank you.
Uh, we are live. There's a audio problem with Carol's computer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brake, we appreciate it. And, uh, Ms. Schwanger, thank you. Um, we're gonna resume the regular meeting. Uh, we, um, kicked off the meeting earlier tonight at 6:30. We had a closed session to talk about some attorney-client privileged information. And now we are, uh, back, so we're gonna do a quick roll call, uh, just so everyone that's tuning in now knows who's here. Mayor Mike Fournier, uh, calling in from, uh, Royal Oak, Michigan. Commissioner Prush?
Here in Royal Oak, Michigan.
Commissioner Douglas?
Here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Macy?
Here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Hunt?
Here in Royal Oak.
Commissioner Dubac?
Here in Royal Oak.
And Commissioner Colo?
Here, also in Royal Oak.
All right, perfect. Uh, we got a full slate tonight, so we will begin. We're gonna start with an invocation given by Commissioner Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us the spirit of service and remind us that we are stewards of your authority and grant us with wisdom to see true perspective. Guide us to be the leaders of the people. Guide us to be the leaders that your people need. Help us to see humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and treat all, no matter the circumstance, with the reverence your creations deserve. Renew us with the strength of your presence and the joy of building a community that is worthy of humanity, and to help us to look to the past with gratitude and to the future with hope. It is all done in your name. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Commissioner Hunt, maybe you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask if you stand, if you can stand, please do so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hunt. Um, very great proclamation, or I'm sorry, very great invocation. Uh, this brings us to item eight, which is a proclamation, uh, designating, um, April as Autism Awareness Month. Uh, we've done this every March proudly, uh, in conjunction with the Judson Center. And so what I'm gonna do is I'm going to read, uh, the proclamation. We have Sue Salhany here from the Judson Center to receive the proclamation. And, um, we'll afford her a few moments afterwards to, to say a few words about this year, some of the challenges and, uh, you know, the way forward. So, this is a proclamation designating April 2021 as Autism Awareness Month in Royal Oak. Whereas autism is a pervasive developmental disorder affecting the social communication and behavioral skill of those affected by it. And whereas more health professionals become proficient in diagnosing autism, more children are being diagnosed on the autism spectrum, resulting in rates as high as 1 in 54 children nationally and over 50,000 individuals in Michigan alone. And whereas while there is no cure for autism, it is well documented that if individuals with autism receive treatment early in their lives, it often is possible for those individuals to lead significantly improved lives. And whereas individuals with autism often require a lifetime of specialized and community support services to ensure their health and safety, and to support families' resilience as they manage the psychological and financial burdens autism, burdens autism parents, and the burdens autism parents presents. And whereas to raise awareness of the Judson Center has spearheaded its Bring Autism to Light campaign, now in the fifth year to educate parents, professionals, and the general public about autism by lighting their Royal Oak campus in blue throughout the month of April, in addition to inviting participation from community, from the community in this multifaceted effort. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, in partnership with the Judson Center, proclaim April 2021 as National Autism Awareness Month in the city of Royal Oak, and urge all employees, residents, and members of the business community to bring autism to light and raise awareness during National Autism Awareness Month. Ms. Salhany, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor Fournier, and good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Salhany, and I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Judson Center. On behalf of our Board of Trustees, our staff, the children and families we serve, we thank you for recognizing Judson Center during Autism Awareness Month in April. You know, we've been on the corner of 13 and Greenfield since 1924, starting as a children's orphanage, and today, um, we are providing not only child and family services, but disability services, behavioral health, primary care, and autism services. Our Autism Connections Program also started at that very same, um, corner, right there at 13 Mile and Greenfield, and it's one of the longest-running providers of autism services in southeast Michigan. We offer a full continuum of services, um, with our most intensive applied behavioral analysis, which is the most intensive treatment and, and ideally the most, intensive early intervention treatment for children diagnosed with autism. We offer not only that ABA therapy, but counseling services, support services for children, parents, and their siblings. And we start these services as young as 18 months old, all the way up through that much-needed transition age into adulthood through age 20. Our Bring Autism to Light campaign is now in its fifth year, and it's our opportunity to bring awareness, education, and advocacy for families who have a loved one with an autism diagnosis. During the month of April, we are having to do things, again, a little different this year, um, because of the pandemic, and we are encouraging everyone in the community to follow us on social media, engage in some of the creative and fun ways that we are trying to offer to help bring autism to light. We thank the city of Royal Oak for all of your support and for being a partner with Judson Center to bring autism to light again this year. Thank you so very much.
Well, thank you, Ms. Salhany, to you and to all of your team at the Judson Center. We do value and prize the partnership we have. We feel grateful, uh, that you guys have been a part of this community for almost 100 years now, doing the great work that you do to improve the lives of, of, um, you know, everyone afflicted with, um, or everyone that, all the parents that have to, to manage autism and, and helping improve the lives of so many of our citizens, uh, that have autism, and, um, it's been, it's been really, really great. And, you know, I want to encourage all of our residents in, uh, Royal Oak. You know, remember you're blue. I don't know if this is coming across at all, uh, with the digital screen, but, um, you know, uh, let's, let's light up, um, blue this year again. And, um, you know, we look forward to all the efforts that we have in store in the future, Ms. Salhany. So, thank you so much for taking time tonight.
Thank you so much.
All right, that brings us to item nine on tonight's agenda, which is the Cobalt Research Presentation Customer Service Survey. Um, I don't know from, I see Mr. Santa Moira here, but I don't know who from city staff is going to kick us off on this one. Is this you, Mr. Brake?
Uh, certainly. So, um, um, we have, uh, conducted the survey, that, uh, there were 1,500 people that were selected. Um, and we received well over 300 responses. Um, so this is a, a good indicator, a good solid, uh, base of, uh, uh, public opinion and will help us guide the, the budget process. Um, I know ordinarily, from what I've been told, is that this is incorporated as part of the strategic plan, but nevertheless, we're, we're still in that period of time, uh, between the, the plan and, uh, formulating the, the budget. So this is entirely appropriate. And, uh, despite, uh, some of the mailing, uh, challenges that we've, um, experienced that, as everyone's encountering, uh, everywhere. So despite that, we kept some very good, uh, contemporary information and very pleased with the results. And, uh, and we'll make this available, the, the full report on the, the city's website. So, so from here, um, turn that over to our presenter that, that has, uh, an executive summary for us this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Let me get everything all situated so you can read it. Uh, there are two versions of this presentation. There is the much, much longer version that you'll have access to if you don't have access to it already, as well as all of the supporting documents. Uh, what I'll be going through, uh, tonight is just the highlights version, just to give you kind of a sense of overall what's in it and the key takeaways. Uh, but, uh, staff felt that you really didn't want to be there for an extra two hours to, to put up with me going through all the statistics, so, uh, we're being nice tonight. But if you have any questions, feel free to just jump in and let me know what those are, and we're, we're kind of addressing them. Okay, I'm going to start off the slideshow from the beginning, and let me know if you have any trouble seeing it. Does it look good? Perfect, all right. Uh, Cobalt, for those of you who have sat through this presentation in the past, and I think most of you have, uh, Cobalt is a 501(c)(3). We're based in Michigan. We do work with communities across the country, uh, doing this very thing. Uh, why research matters, just as a reminder of, of why you go through this whole, uh, process every few years. Uh, first of all, it's a very practical tool, so it helps you improve performance, management, and also build trust, this in accountability kind of tool. Uh, it also enhances the other kind of engagement efforts that you have in place. Uh, so engagements in terms of your, your social media, in terms of all the other outbound communications, but also the various conversations that you have as you're out in the community and you're just interacting with residents. This is a great compliment to the work that you're already doing, to, to be in contact with the residents and, and what it is that they would like to see done. Uh, this is something of an audit, so it is an independent look at what those experiences are that your residents have. And it really helps you have a tool to balance the demands of vocal groups with the reality of limited resources. Uh, it's a great way of understanding if there's a, a particular theme that you're hearing in your conversations. Is that something that's just coming from a small group? Or is it something that's more widely represented in the community? Um, this is a very useful tool for planning, as, uh, as we just talked about a moment ago, and also for communication, making sure that your messages are things that really resonate well with your residents. And ultimately, this is just a, a real trust builder to do this on a regular discipline basis like you've been doing. So the study goals for this particular project, um, support the budget and strategic planning decisions, decisions that you are working on with this additional layer of statistical community engagement. Uh, you've been doing this since 2013, so this is a great way to look at those baseline measures, to see how you're progressing on some of those. Uh, and also to just let not only other, uh, staff and other leaders in the city see how things are moving, but also the residents as well. Uh, from an analytical standpoint, we take this information to see which areas have the greatest impact on overall satisfaction, and more importantly, certain outcomes that are important to the city overall, things like people remaining in the community and recommending it to others, volunteering, and those types of outcome-based behaviors. Uh, this provides you some additional context, because the ACSSI is part of what we do. It's the American Customer Satisfaction Index. Uh, and it ties in with the broader benchmarking project that we do nationally. So you're able to compare your scores to similarly sized communities at the state, at the regional, and at the national level, too. Uh, particularly important when you have these crazy things going on like COVID and discontent and a particularly, um, challenging political period, uh, because everyone's scores are, are moving around because of all of these external factors. So being able to have that context to see, you know, how are you moving compared to these other groups is especially useful. All right, methodology, uh, as noted, we did a random sample of 1,500 residents, uh, from voter records. This was truly randomized. We collected the data in November 2020 through January 2021. We had some delays because of all of the postal backups that were going on. Um, so we did have to do a little bit of fagling there to, to make sure that we had the, the responses necessary to provide a solid analysis. Uh, we had a response from 389, uh, residents, which is very solid. It gives us a conventional margin of error of plus or minus 5%. I have a 95% confidence. And for the ACSSI metrics, for the benchmarking things that we do, it's actually a plus or minus, uh, 2.1%. So it's a little bit of a tighter methodology there. Um, one of the questions that always comes up is for a community your size is 389 responses enough to give you a good representative feel of what's going on in the community? And to get plus or minus 5% at the national level to represent, have a mirror image of the opinions of 330 million people, um, you only need 385, 84, uh, responses. So you're really in good shape. Uh, when we looked at the response pattern compared to prior years, it was very much a mirror image of what we seen with prior surveys that we've done at the city. So from a comparability standpoint, year over year, it's very solid as well. Okay, let me jump to some of the, um, the bottom-line metrics, so you know how well you did. Um, certainly COVID has been a challenging year for everyone. Uh, you did really well. Uh, you did well compared to the benchmarks, uh, and you are outperforming the benchmarks in a number of areas. So as you dive in through that long report, you're going to see that most of the time you're at or above where these other groups are. Uh, your score did soften a little bit from a, uh, 69 to a 67 from 2017 to 2020. Um, and that's a two-point, that's less than the margin of error, so, um, well, I think it did soften a little bit. It's not a, a major move by any means. And to put it in context, we saw the state of Michigan drop in that period, uh, by one point. We saw the Midwest drop by two points. National actually held about the same, um, in that period. So as expected, we see, we saw a score soften for things like events, um, for the library, which wasn't open, uh, a whole lot, and also for local schools. Uh, we did see improvements, though, in terms of transportation and also the customer service received from City Hall. So those are two really interesting things that, that really came out of the data. Uh, there are five areas that have the most leverage on overall satisfaction in those outcome metrics that I talked about, people remaining in the community, recommending it to others, and so on. And these are listed here. So city government, management, economy, parks and recreation, the shopping, dining, and schools. And these scores are not necessarily low scores, but these are the things that have the most bang for the buck, essentially, as you look at your budget, you look at what kind of things you want to put into it going forward. Uh, these are the kind of things, um, that are going to help you move forward most rapidly. We had a number of questions regarding, uh, residents' experience during the first shutdown for COVID. Uh, one of the questions was about using the parks, and about 70% said that they actually felt quite safe using the parks during that period. Uh, we asked, what are the critical services during that shutdown and future shutdowns that, uh, that we should be aware of? And the four things that came up out of that were park maintenance, uh, police response, recycling, and farmer's market, is the four things people wanted to see the most. We talked about some different, uh, delivery options for city services, and over 70% were quite comfortable with the online options and with the curbside delivery kinds of options. Um, in your report, you're not only going to have, you know, all of the graphs, but there's also a bunch of these cross tabs that you've seen before that essentially take every question in the survey and list them across the top, uh, as column heads. Then you have every demographic group within the city listed out as rows. You can take the, you know, the columns and the rows and bring them together and see what the scores are for each of those groups. And the reason that we do that is so that no voice is lost. Sometimes when you're, when you're rolling the data, the data up into a, an overall score, you know, smaller groups, um, their voice gets drowned out. This is a nice tool for you to be able to see those individual perspectives. We have it broken down by years of residency, whether people own or rent, um, are they working in the city, outside of the city? Are they unemployed or retired? Age, education, you can see all these different things. Household composition is who lives in the home, so do they have young children, teenage children, dependent parents? Um, and then we also talk about ethnicity and gender and, and area of town as well. So let me dive into some of the results at the high level, so you can get a sense for how you did. So this is comparing your 2017 scores to your 2020 scores with just kind of the, the main categories of citizen experiences. The ones that are colored this bright green, uh, are the ones that have the most impact on your overall satisfaction, those five areas that I listed. And then we have this change column over here that's telling you, you know, how much of a change was there from 17 to 2020? Um, these are rounded, so you might see some of them a little bit off, uh, and the, uh, the arrow coloring is designed to take into account that margin error. So if you see, you know, a difference of greater than two, then you'll see an arrow up or down. If it's within that margin, it's just going to be the, uh, the yellow arrow. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out, uh, overall, a lot of stability in your scores. The big one that changed that was one of the drivers, uh, was the public schools overall. So that one dropped quite a bit. And I think that's probably the reason that the overall ACSSI drops, uh, like it did. Um, everything else, really stable. So shopping opportunities, even though things were closed, still held stable. Local government overall, uh, was stable from a statistical standpoint. Economic health was stable, and parks and recreation were stable. So these are all really great things that speaks well to the resilience of the community and of all of the work that you folks have put into this over the last few years. You're going to see a lot of graphs like this in the larger report. And let me just show how to, uh, to read these. So the bright orange is your 2020 score, and the gray was your score back in 2017. Light green is for similarly sized communities in Michigan. The darker green is for Michigan overall. Pink is for the Midwest, similar-sized Midwest overall. National, similar-sized national overall. The key benchmark for you to take a look at is the slight green one. So that's the other municipalities of similar size in Michigan. The other ones just provide you with some greater context. You'll see that a lot of the graphs have this pattern. So you are outperforming the benchmarks, but you may have had a little bit of a, a sag here from 2017 to 2020. Uh, this particular chart is looking at community image compared to the benchmarks, so you can see safe place to live, enjoyable place for children, and so on. Uh, you're doing really well. Uh, there were a number of scores diving into, uh, the experience with local government specifically. It's a little bit of a busy slide, uh, but the shape, again, paying attention to the green bar, which is the one that's the most important benchmark, tells you that you're in pretty solid shape from a performance standpoint. Um, one of the lower-scoring areas here is spending dollars wisely, and that's almost always something that falls into communication, to make sure that you're talking about, um, the spending being aligned with things that the, the residents care about, making sure that it resonates. So that's something that, uh, you just want to pay a little bit more attention to. Uh, doing really well with having employees who are well-trained, doing really well with, um, uh, maintaining a website that meets resident needs. Looking at some of the customer service experiences, specifically diving in, level of professionalism of city staff, we saw a nice bump in that. We saw a nice bump also in the follow-up provided by staff, uh, and getting answers, uh, to the questions. So all, again, very nice gains, well above the benchmarks, so everyone there, uh, is doing a nice job trying to make sure that, uh, residents continue to be served. Let me dive into some of the COVID-specific questions. Uh, we asked, which city services did you use during COVID? And the things, this is open-ended, things that came up most often are the words that are the largest. And then we just added in some themes to give you a little bit more context of what that word meant. So the word vote, uh, a lot of individuals using the absentee ballot pickup and drop box. Um, drop, talking about the drop box for many services, from dog registration to votes, the dropping off bills, uh, library, uh, the online, uh, pickup. And all of those kinds of services were also noted. So people really appreciated how the library was able to, to step forward during the pandemic. What did they have difficulty with? Well, water was a big one. So, uh, folks noted some of the water quality things that have come up, uh, in the last year. And there was also some confusion with the online bill pay, particularly with folks who aren't necessarily as comfortable paying bills online. Uh, the word call came up fairly often, so folks mentioned that their calls were not returned. So even though statistically, uh, a couple of slides back, we saw that follow-up was going up, there's still some pockets where that's, that's something to continue to work on. And school, um, so there was some frustration about no one person schooling, the schools being closed. Uh, recommendations and things that the city can do to improve, uh, resident experiences going forward. Uh, the word open i- is very large, so they would love to see more information as far as what's open and what's not, because things are moving around so much, it was a little bit hard to, to stay current. Uh, they'd like to see the senior center library and other staff facilities open more often, so that they can take advantage of them. The word park, um, people would like to have more access in terms of, uh, time of day, uh, to get into the parks and some additional maintenance going on there. The word service, you can see that across there on the bottom, uh, community members, uh, noted that, um, more outbound information, um, as far as what's going on from a city perspective at a local level with COVID, and the kinds of things that they need to be aware of, that would be very useful kind of information to have, because with the media, it might have been more general to the, to the region. Uh, they wanted to see specifically for Royal Oak, what, what was available and what could they, what they could do. Um, some improved phone service, because there was a little bit of challenge on that side, and again, more service hours being open, uh, or longer number of hours per day. We asked which services they consider to be critical, um, for them and their households or their business. And the four areas that really came out the most, recycling program, park maintenance, um, farmer's market, and police response. We talked a little bit about delivery mode, and, uh, the two that were the most popular, people that were the most comfortable with the online services, and the curbside pickup and drop-off. So that is a whirlwind summary of some of the very top-end results. Uh, just a couple of things to keep in mind as you're going into the next stage and looking at the long report and diving into the data. Uh, as you look at it and you start trying to identify those, those scores that you want to move up, um, keep in mind that there's two types of gaps. You've got the performance gap and the perception gap. The perception gap is more of an outreach and communications kind of strategy to, to, to adjust that perception that people may have that may not be factual. The performance issue is where you actually do have to do something differently, whether it's a process or resources, uh, or change the tools that are available. But once you have the performance issue addressed, then it actually becomes a perception issue, and then you'll need to address it on the communication side as well. Because unless you tell someone that something has gotten better, odds are they're going to keep that old impression, uh, for, uh, could be years and years, uh, until, uh, they have another opportunity to experience the change. So this is a process, uh, that a lot of communities use to take the results and make sure that they're being acted on, so it just doesn't collect dust on the shelf. So you've got the measurement that you've done. Uh, the next step is really from a city council standpoint, from a, a, a staff leadership perspective, look at those, those scores that you want to change the most, and get a couple of flip charts up, and ask yourself two questions. Question number one, why did people respond the way they did? Number two, brainstorming out the things that you can do differently. The next stage is the validate and confirmation stage. You're going to take those two sheets, and you're going to, to expand the conversation to line staff, to, to work groups with residents. Um, and you're going to say, you know, these, this is what we're trying to change. These are some of the things that we came up with. Um, number one, what's missing from the list? And number two, what are the two or three things that would really make the most difference to you? And that helps you really focus in on those specific actions. Step four is training. So what are the tools? What are the processes? What are the skills that need to be picked up to move forward with this? The actual implementation stage, produce project management 101 to make sure it gets done, and then coming back again in a few years to measure again and see, you know, have you gained on those areas that you wanted to gain on, and how have priorities shifted as the context changes for folks? Okay. So that is the end of the presentation. At this point, uh, what questions do you have that I might be able to answer?
Thank you, Mr. Santa Moira. Um, great presentation, great summary. If we can, I can't see all the commissioners right now. If we can exhibit this presentation real quickly, I'm If we can, I can't see all the commissioners right now. If we can exhibit this presentation real quickly, I'm sorry. We're still going with the hand raise mode here in this arena. Are there any questions? Perspectives? Just some, I mean, Commissioner Macy, go ahead.
Well, you sort of hinted at this, but you know, we're not the only city you're doing this for. What have, what have you been seeing over the last year? Like, what is, what's, what's it look like? Is, are we doing pretty typical, it sounds like, or is it different?
I think you've been pretty typical. So we've seen, we've certainly seen softening. Things like volunteering is down. Events are, you know, non-existent, so people are taking a hit on that. Schools are closed, so all of these things are weighing in. But we have seen with the clients that we've worked with during this period, maybe a bit more appreciation for what staff are doing, because it's less than ideal. But I think people are just a little bit more aware of the effort that it takes to try to, you know, get brand new processes spun up, to, to set up the curbside, to set up the online, set up all these different things. So I think people have actually been very pleased to see the kind of extra effort going into it. And really being able to continue to provide services in spite of really crazy situation. The other thing that we've seen that's been really cool for you as well as for other clients is this push into more online service. And that's kind of accelerated for some of the, for some of the younger cohorts or groups that are much more computer savvy, that have been wanting to see this for years. They do a lot of their work online, they do a lot of bill paying and that kind of thing. So this has really forced the city to, to kind of accelerate that process so that you're able to do a lot more online than you had been in the past.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very interesting presentation, lots of data to go through. I'm excited to take a weekend and really dive into it, because this is really informative on, I know Mr. Briggs left me, I am actually looking forward to it this weekend. But it is super informative about where we are as a city and how people are feeling, and it's the pulse. You know, one question I do have, just off the, you know, off this presentation, I saw many indications about the school system. And, you know, as I'm sure you're aware, we have no control over the, the public school system here in the city. We, we're partners, we, we communicate with them on a fairly regular basis. But this city commission, this body has absolutely no control over the direction and the course of the, the school. So do people understand that? Is that made, you know, is that something that's brought to people's attention when taking the survey?
Yeah, we, we do talk about that. The, the other thing is that there's really two pieces of the survey. One piece is looking at the community and community experience that's broader than just the city government. And when you're looking at why people choose one town over another, often schools are a huge part of that and their experiences they have with the school. So, so understanding that's an important insight to have, just in terms of the whole Royal Oak ecosystem. The, most people realize that city government does not have control over the, the local school board, that they're two entirely different entities. But there are conversations and shared interests. And so this kind of data, you know, having the conversations with the school to share with them, and maybe there's some opportunities to, to work together to further the, the particular communication kind of things, to kind of level that up, to help them have one more channel where they can get information out. Because while they might be really, really strong at getting information out to parents, often the schools aren't nearly as adept at getting the information out to the community as a whole, which is something that you're much stronger into it. So while you don't have control, you can provide tools to help them do their job a little bit better.
Thank you, I appreciate that insight.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. While every community can always do better, it is, it certainly empowers us as city commissioners to go out and tell the story of how well-regarded our services are. And, and the, the fact that we saw some strengthening even in the face of COVID, I think tells us that Royal Oak is really moving in the right direction. This report comes at an opportune time, because next week, Mr. St. Moore and I are going to be panelists on a SEMCOG seminar, using surveys to engage residents and move your community forward. I'll be speaking from the, the status of an elected official as to how data like this helps us both improve our community, but also empower us to tell our story. So I look, look forward to chatting with him further about this.
Yeah, what was interesting too in the data that I noticed is there's some interesting, I mean, this is a tough year, a tough period to, to do a survey, I imagine. And obviously, there's some things we have no control over that, you know, found its way. But that affected every other city and every other community, so you got to look at those scores. What was interesting to me, though, we've used this, this isn't the first time we've done this type of survey. I mean, this is something that we've been using to inform our important decisions that we make as a body and set our strategy and direction. You know, it's interesting, like you see one of the things like spend money wisely, that was kind of on the lower end. But really, you look at all the things that actually the money buys, like Parks and Recreation, all these things that we overachieve to other communities, or even performance year over year. It's kind of an interesting, is there, like, do you see national narrative things falling in there that affect these opinions? Do you see, like, to me, that, and like the other little disconnect is, yeah, you know, the library service went down 5%, but then we got all these accolades for all the adjustments that the library did to kind of get books out and do all their services and everything. Isn't that people just, when they answer, they're really car, car mentalizing things? Or, you know, what's the psychology there? Because, I mean, I agree, I don't, I don't challenge people's feelings. And definitely, if there's a perception versus performance thing, we got to look at as far as how money is spent and things like that. But it was just interesting to me, because I would expect if that out of the gate is an issue, then it would seem like everything else, you would say, no, none of these things are great. You have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I do. One is that all communities receive poor grades on that. And I think that's not because all communities are poor at it. I think it's because there's a general perception that government doesn't make wise spending decisions, whether it's, you know, trillions of dollars from a federal standpoint, or the state, or the county, or whatever. There's just sort of that general opinion. When it comes time to actually become educated on how a specific community does it, I think few people are interested in actually understanding the details. And even if you were designing the communications to go through and say, you know, this is how we work contracts, this is how the decision process works, this is how we, we weigh out, you know, what kind of incremental improvements can we afford in the roads for the dollars that are available and all the infrastructure underneath. Most residents, their eyes are going to glaze over, and they're not going to, if they do pay attention, they're going to forget it in about 10 minutes. So I, I think that's one important element to it. The other is that, you know, from a communication standpoint, because, you know, it does tend to bore people, you don't put it in your communications very much. And so that's something that the city could do, is just spending a little bit more time, you know, having a boring section of the newsletter for those who really want to get in and dig that, that financial side of things and spell it out. This is how things are done. And even if it's not something that they get into, just seeing on a regular basis that you're taking time to tell the story and provide some of the nuts and bolts background, may be something that helps you move that score up. And even with that, keep in mind with the benchmarks, you're still outperforming the benchmarks. So while it's not your strengths in terms of the perception, it's really not anybody's strength either.
Anybody else? Now, just add, I think it's going to be fun to dig into the data, you know? Because I think everybody up here, from city staff to each of us, you know, public servants at, at the commission level, you know, we, we take our service to the community seriously and we're probably obsessed. And we get that email, like, oh my gosh, is the world falling down? We got to take a look and understand. And, you know, the reality is, is this type of information is helpful to, to see if we're going in the right direction or wrong direction. And, you know, it looks like, you know, because we engage people, like Commissioner Douglas said, and, and because we survey people, we have a better informed way. And hopefully, this stuff just, you know, feeds off itself and we get better and better and better at, at the representation that we provide. And that we have honest conversations where we come up short, like, okay, great. You know, we have a very technical understanding of something, but maybe emotionally, people feel a little different. Okay, let's look into that. Maybe, you know, like you said, is it perception or is it performance? And, you know, I think to, to, to be good managers of this community, we have to confront truth. And it's always good to get this sort of feedback. Anybody else have anything at all on this? Presentation?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity. Oh, that was another question.
Commissioner Macy, you got something?
Well, you said some interesting things in response to these questions. What things do we not ask? What other tips do you have? What are your, what are your top tips for communities?
Well, there's going to be a great seminar from SEMCOG next week, where we'll, we'll have a whole roundtable and get into that a little bit more. The, the main tip is, think about what are the key messages that you need to get out to the community that really resonate. And then really make sure you take every opportunity to repeat those over and over and over again. And as you're going through some of the different metrics in the survey and sharing back with the residents what you heard from them, making sure you're still hitting those key themes over and over and over again. Because it's such a noisy media environment out there, it's really hard for folks to, to even be aware that you have a message until you've really, you've gotten to the point for yourself that you're absolutely sick of it. That's the point that people are just finally starting to realize that you're saying something. Your lips are starting to move, and maybe they should pay attention. So really being deliberate in terms of over-communicating things is key. Well, thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure to work with the city all of these years and to come back and look at the data in this very interesting year. Hats off for the leadership and for the staff and for the residents of the city of really, you know, being resilient and really coming through this in, in really a pretty solid way, despite all of the craziness of 2020. So thank you.
Well, we appreciate all your efforts, Will and your team. And thank you so much for not just helping out tonight, but also helping us go through this process over the years, learn and grow, and become a better city and a better community. So thank you so much.
My pleasure.
All right. Well, that brings us to item 10 on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Ms. Schwanger? Might have the same audio issue, Mr. Bray.
Yeah, yeah, we're not hearing her. Bear with her for a minute, because she's logged on to two different computers, so.
Not perfect, but.
Yeah. And if all else fails, I'm the backup to the backup, so.
Hi, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
All right. All right. I'm going to start us out, and please bear with me, because I am on a different computer. Just a moment, I got to make sure I have my. Mayor Fonya, members of the city commission, we had 59 messages called in this evening. And let me just sort them back by date from oldest to newest. So we have the first ones called in. All right, here we go.
Hello, city commission. It is me again, the skateboard lawyer, just calling to check in and remind everybody to support the Royal Oak Skate Park project. I'm sure there will be more people who are calling in to express their interest in this project. I'm hoping that somebody will have Parks and Rec contact me. I've done my best to reach out to them, though nobody has responded. But we are very serious that we would love a skate park in this community. It could only bring good. I've seen it, I've lived it for the last 21 years. The local parks are so busy that we should have a skate park here. I went to Ferndale the other day, and it was packed. There are members of the Royal Oak community who are there, and I know they would appreciate not having to drive to the neighboring cities. And as all of you already know, there is an overwhelming amount of support for this. So I hope that the conversation continues and that Parks and Rec will get this thing on the budget, so we can start planning for the parks that will, I'm sure, exceed everybody's expectations. Have a great evening. Thank you.
My name is John Williams. I am the head trustee of the Metropolitan Detroit Veterans Coalition, otherwise known as the M D V C. The M D V C is the sponsor of the annual Metropolitan Detroit Veterans Day Parade and Armed Forces Salute. The M D V C consists of 50-plus veterans from all the military branches, Army, Marines, Navy, Air Force, Coast Guard. We are affiliated, affiliated with all the major veteran service organizations, the American Legion, the AMVETS, the Disabled American Veterans, Jewish War Veterans, Military Order of the Purple Heart, Veterans of Foreign Wars, the Vietnam Veterans of America. As veterans, we oppose the moving of any veterans memorial without the involvement of veterans service organizations. The city of Royal Oak has lied and continues to mislead the public by claiming veterans were involved in the planning of the park and the movement of the monument. Most recently, a member of a political group affiliated with the city verbally and physically abused, intimidated and harassed and jostled an American Legion member at the farmer's market who was gathering signatures on petitions, claiming that this was all politically motivated. Nothing is further from the truth. Veteran service organizations have no political affiliations. As veterans, we stand shoulder to shoulder with our comrades in arms at the American Legion and the VFW in Royal Oak in opposing this movement of this memorial. Leave our memorials alone. Thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Charles Simcina, very longtime Royal Oak resident. I'm speaking to the public, not necessarily the city commission, who ignores the public and, and tries to harm the veterans memorial. I was the city attorney for 10 years, and I understand how ordinance and ballot proposals are put together. In 2007, after I left the city attorney's office after 10 years, I was elected to a four-year term as city commissioner. On that same ballot was a ballot proposal that was voted on unanimously and placed on the ballot by the city commission to protect and preserve the veterans memorial and the land around it, so that we would always have a veterans memorial in that location in front of the library steps, which create an amphitheater effect. 90% of the voters in that election supported that. The only way to change that is by, by another ballot proposal. The commission refuses to do that. They ignore the laws of the city of Royal Oak on a repetitive basis. They've ignored the charter in the past by creating almost a quarter billion dollars of debt and exceeding the debt limits. They enter into no-bid contracts in violation of the charter. Then they receive political contributions from the beneficiaries of those contracts. People have objected to having their trees cut down, and they cut them down right before Christmas, in the dead of winter. On and on and on. And it's no surprise that the habitual violators of the Royal Oak ordinances and the most frequent violators are our own city commission. I'm going to give you my opinion based on the facts, reviewing the ordinance and all the newspaper articles from 2007, the unanimous votes of the city commission. This commission is violating the ordinance by moving the memorial, by putting nonmemorial uses on the land designated for memorial purposes only, and not placing this proposal on the ballot. I applaud the veterans for going forward with a petition. Everyone should sign it. A new ballot proposal will be on the ballot in the future election. We should all vote for that. The commission should apologize to the veterans, the voters, the donors who donated money for this memorial. They should pledge to tell the truth about the memorial and remove all the information they put on their website. Almost all of it is false. They've got bad motion, motives, and bad intentions. This is proven by intentionally excluding veterans from this entire process that's lasted two and a half years. They formed a so-called task force. It's all composed of non-experts themselves and their political contributors. And even though veterans should have been on the task force to monitor the progress of the park design, they were excluded. The task force then contacted so-called stakeholders, sent them letters. They didn't even recognize veterans as stakeholders, even though the park area has a large segment of it comprised of the veterans memorial land.
My name's Edward Burkhart. I am the commander of the Franklin American Legion Post 253 in Royal Oak, and I request that the official City Minutes reflect that I speak for over 400 veterans and their families at our American Legion post. We would like to inform the residents of Royal Oak that they are being fed lies by the City Commission when it comes to our Veterans War Memorial. The first lie is that veterans were included in the community engagement surrounding our Veterans War Memorial. I speak for all veterans of the American Legion Post 253 when I say, not one of us, not one of us, let alone our leadership, has ever been asked to take part in this task force body, nor were they asked to take part in any stakeholders' meetings that had helped shape the community engagement sessions. These sessions never provided people with the option to see how the park could be designed around the current memorial and its surrounding landscape and its designated land. In effect, it prevented anyone from picking an option that would have prevented the memorial from being moved. A second lie is that they say they have the right to move the Veterans War Memorial without a popular vote of the people. The ordinance voted on and approved by 90% of the voters in 2007 was designed and intended to create a protective green space that would surround the memorial and ensure its serenity would not be affected by future development. To have you suggest that the ordinance we voted on allows you to move our memorial to the edge of the designated area is legal or makes it better, not only insulting to our intelligence, but it's also insulting to every voter that approved this ordinance. Tonight, I'm asking for the people of Royal Oaks to support us in our joint effort with the local VFW to take this matter out of your hands. Since we cannot trust you to do the right thing, we are gathering signatures to place an ordinance on the November ballot that will preserve and protect our Veterans War Memorial and the land that it surrounds, to provide the remedies if you choose to continue to violate the will of the people. Please visit us at www/savetheveteransmemorial.com to learn more about our fight to save our memorial from being destroyed and to find out how you can sign our petition. Thank you very much for your time.
Hello, it's Christian Hoffer, and I just want to let you know that above all, I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I believe in skateboarding. I believe it's good for people, creates from a growth perspective, and in so many other ways. I would not be the person I am if it weren't for skateboarding, and it was the skate parks that allowed me to really find it and to really develop a real passion for, which has echoed into my adult life. If there is anything this city needs, it is a skate park in Royal Oak, so please, 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 let's make it happen together. All right, thank you so much. Have a beautiful day. I love you. Bye.
Hi, this is Jonathan Gilpin. I'm a resident of West Bloomfield, but I love skateboarding. I work at a skate shop, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project.
Hi, my name is Adam Zupke. I just wanted to let you guys know that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park and think it should be built. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joe Gall. My son, Jaden Gall, goes to Royal Oak High School, and we both ride at the Ferndale Skate Park a lot, and we'd really like to see a skate park built in Royal Oak. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Dante. I'm calling in support of the Royal Oak Skate Park. As we've seen, it's been a benefit to places like Ferndale and many other cities. I think that it would be a great fit for Royal Oak and a great way for people to get out as the summer approaches. Thank you.
This is Bill Harrison, 2729 Trafford in Royal Oak. I'm again addressing the proposed relocation of the Veterans Memorial for the benefit of the new commissioners. I was a member of the DDA when the memorial monuments were consolidated to the current location. The monuments had previously been moved three times. The intent was that the monuments would never be moved again. Commissioner Carlo Genati and I led the effort to see that the memorial was protected in some fashion, whether by dedication or ordinance. The city manager, city attorney, and city planner preferred to protect the memorial by ordinance. The ordinance, as written, is apparently ambiguous. The ordinance should be amended to confirm that the current monument location is protected, not just the land upon which it sits. As of now, the memorial is surrounded only by the perimeter construction fence that encompasses the entire park site. However, the oak tree adjacent to the old city hall is protected from construction and is posted with a sign that reads as follows: No Entry, Tree Protected Zone. Any contractor, subcontractor, or equipment operator who damages this tree will be subject to severe fines and penalties. City of Royal Oak, Parks and Forestry Department. I ask that the city provide equal protection for the memorial as they have for a tree. Thank you.
I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Frank Flores, and I am the commander of the South Oakland DAV Chapter 14, representing approximately 564 members. First of all, I just want to make a comment about the movement that we oppose on the monument that Royal Oak has settled down. I understand that this has been done without permission of the veterans group. I've been notified just recently of this, and I have never been told that this was being taken care of. We attended a two-hour session at our post, and most of the members do agree that this monument should stay put as it is. By moving it, you're moving the sacred ground of our veterans. It's like if you want to move the US Arizona that's on the ground at Pearl Harbor, well, you're just moving it on a bad cause. Again, I want to speak of all our membership, that they all oppose this, majority have said to me that if there's any way they can do to help to keep the monument there, they will, along with other groups that I belong, American Legion, DAV, of course, and the AMVETS, and also the VVA. Second of all, by moving this will cause many, many, many problems with the citizens of Royal Oak. I know I'm not from Royal Oak, but I do wish to work with them on this issue. If there's any way and means I can do to help this cause, I will be gladly to be there. Again, I appreciate you giving me the time to speak. If any word on this to come on about, I hope it comes directly to us instead of by email or phone call. Thank you so much, and I appreciate you giving me this time.
Hi, my name is Hunter Perkins, and I'm calling in support of a skate park being built in Royal Oak. I think it'd be a really great addition for the community and help the kids out, and I know that it's really needed and necessary and that so many people would benefit from it. So, thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Hey, my name is Marina Chupak, and I support the skate parks in Royal Oak. Please build one for the kids. I think it'd be great for the community and just having that space for things to do in the summer. And yeah, please build a skate park. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Klotz. I am currently the post judge advocate at the Veterans of Foreign War Post Acorn 1669 here in Royal Oak. I am a combat wounded veteran, and I request that official City Minutes reflect that I speak for over 600 posts and auxiliary members here at the post. I would like to inform the residents of Royal Oak that despite what the commissioners say, veterans have been opposed for the move of the Veterans War Memorial for quite some time. For over the past year, we have let them know via emails and public comment that we were not happy with the decision to move the Veterans War Memorial about, come about. And the move would degrade it and not improve it, and most importantly, that the move is illegal per ordinance number 156 and denies the people the right to vote that it provides. As a veteran who fought in foreign soil to protect our democracy, I cannot in good decision allow my fellow neighbors to be denied a right they are due by city law. You have chosen to either ignore or protest or offer weak defenses in your decision. After a year plus of hearing dissent from us, it should be no surprise to you that the current stockholders are not happy with your decision to reduce the memorial's footprint in the park. Your plan exposes it to the very thing that caused it to be relocated in front of the library in the first place, and have the land it's set on and surrounding it should be protected for future development. When change brings the important improvement, it should be welcome, however, we do not welcome the change of the memorial because it diminishes it. It reduces its ceremonial area and removes the peaceful tranquility the site offers. Tonight, I ask the people of Royal Oak to support our joint effort with the local American Legion Post and the DAV since the people of Royal Oak cannot trust for you to do the right thing. We veterans will take on the fight, remove this decision out of your hands where it should have never been in the first place. Please visit www/savetheveteransmemorial.com to sign up, to sign a petition and learn more about our fight to save the memorial. We are now gathering signatures to place a ordinance on the November ballot that would provide and protect our Veterans War Memorial, provides remedies if you choose to continue to violate the will of the people. Thank you.
Hi, this is Pamela Lindell. Calling into public comment should be a safe place to express our concerns about our city, not a venue for commissioners to bully, ridicule, badmouth residents for having an opinion that differs from the commission's. By this example, the commission has created nasty supporters who follow their lead and behave badly in public. I refer to the farmer's market this past Saturday where I witnessed a commission supporter who was collecting signatures with several commissioners go out of his way to verbally and physically try to intimidate one of our wonderful Royal Oak veterans who was collecting petition signatures and talking to people about the Royal Oak Veterans War Memorial. I couldn't believe what I was witnessing. You know who you are, and shame on you.
I'm a life member of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, or VFW. I'm also a life member of the American Legion Post 253 in Royal Oak, and I am a life member of the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 19. I am currently the VFW National Council Administration member representing the 35,000 VFW members throughout Michigan, and I am also a past VFW state commander. I have also lived in Royal Oak for 21 years. When I enlisted in Armed Forces of the United States, I wrote a blank check. What that means is, is that I joined the US Navy to fight for our country, the United States of America. I did not know if I was going to live or die for our country, so you, Mayor Fonya, and all the city commissioners could enjoy the freedom that you have today. Now I am speaking to all of you in behalf of the veterans who cannot speak for themselves, the veterans who gave the ultimate sacrifice, those veterans who are not with us today, the 188 names on the Veterans Memorial. If they were alive today, they would be up in arms. They would tell you, like I am telling you. Please leave our Veterans Memorial alone. It doesn't need to be moved again. It is in a perfect place for us. We are happy where it is. This is the perfect location for everyone to come and remember us for future generations. Thank you.
This is Jeffrey Quanmire, and I approve of the skate park. I think it would be good for the community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elise, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Hello, this is Ray, and I am calling to share my support for the Royal Oak Skate Project. I think it'll be a huge asset to our community. Thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Nicole, and I'm a resident of Royal Oak. I just wanted to call to give my support for the Royal Oak Skate Park. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ariana, and I live in Royal Oak, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. My number is 248-506-5170. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Schureb. That's S-H-U-R-E-B, as in boy. Just calling to say that I support the building of the Royal Oak Skate Park. Skate parks are a great place for kids, teens, adults, anyone who wants a place to skateboard, get outside, get exercise. They're great to have in your community. There was a Royal Oak Skate Park that was built a long time ago that is outdated and small, and the technology has grown in leaps and bounds since. I'm also aware that there are several skate parks in the surrounding areas, Clough and Ferndale, Birmingham, Farmington, and the list goes on, but these create a network of skate parks that skaters use, and if they get bored of one, or the different skate parks feature different obstacles, they can jump around from park to park and keep themselves entertained. And it also keeps people off of public property where a lot of skateboarders like to skateboard in the streets, in public places. This keeps people out of public places and into parks where it's contained and not on private property. So yeah, it's a great place for kids and teens especially to spend their time in a positive way and get exercise. So yep, support the Royal Oak Skate Park. Thank you.
This is Rick Kurelsky. A couple of things. First off, what are we paying your project managers for downtown Park Four? Because apparently they have no concept of the term budget and/or contracts as far as keeping them and getting them and making sure that things are done on time. And I certainly would like to find out what it is that we actually paid for the police station and City Hall, the final cost of that, since these are the same people who were supposed to project manage that, and last we heard they were under budget. But I'm starting to very much disbelieve that statement. Second off, the COVID money, there was some issue, there was some article in the newspaper that you want to look at rainwater abatement. Why are we doing that when you folks are also wanting to lessen actual lot sizes and allow buildings to be built lot line to lot line, thereby completely removing any groundwater absorption because you're not going to have any green space around the lot anyway? I don't understand that. How about we actually either save the money for the rainy, for an actual rainy day, since you also had Mr. Ellison come in and want to gut Prop A and Headley where we, people will not get taxed by other homes, and/or finish the Normandy Oaks Park, which was, we were waiting for additional months to figure for Phase Two, and/or actually finish the residential street project, which we have a miller on, rather than going for these other projects that no one voted for and no one approved. And lastly, regarding the Veterans Memorial that is sitting down there at the city park that you put a fence around, that memorial is sitting there hanging out completely naked. I don't know, apparently you guys have no qualms about that thing being damaged. There's more, there was more protection for trees when you were moving around stuff by the Bojji Building than you have for that monument sitting there that nobody can visit now. And also, were you planning on moving it? It's going to be inundated with salt, and salt and marble don't work very well. So I would certainly like to have, since we've got this city park that is completely over budget, why don't we just leave the memorial where it is, save some money from moving it, and protect it before it gets damaged when you tear down the police station and City Hall? Thank you.
Hi, this is Shane Thomas. I'm just calling to say I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. It could be a great, a great thing for the community. We're getting a lot of skateboarders in our community. But yeah, I support it. It'd be a cool thing to do. Bye.
Dr. Wallace Anderson, 404 Mount Vernon Boulevard. In public comment March 8th, I mentioned briefly inaccuracies about money for relocating the Veterans War Memorial on your Romy History of the Veterans Memorial document. Your document and Commissioner Peruch's figures from the January 11th commission meeting do not stand up to fact checking. Some of the numbers cited by Commissioner Peruch in the Romy document appear to come from DVA minutes, not from actual fiscal records kept by the city for the DVA. I mentioned on March 8th that the $25,000 raised by the Memorial Society comes from DVA minutes July 20th, 2005, not from Memorial Society or Acorn Foundation records, and was preliminary. Fundraising continued for another year. In the past couple of months, Carol Hennessy, head of Memorial Society, has requested city accounting records. Her requests have been ignored. So she does not have an official record of what was spent for the relocation and landscaping, but she does have the Memorial Society's and the city's Acorn Foundation records for fundraising from May 5th, 2005 through May 31st, 2006, and they correspond closely. Here are the facts. The community, businesses, veterans, unions, and service organizations, individuals, and the Royal Police Foundation contributed just under $43,000 as of early summer 2006. In-kind and DVA funding amounted to slightly over $120,000. I'll send my detailed analysis to you tomorrow. Both in-kind and DVA funds were solicited by the Memorial Society, and injustice should also be counted as donations. I remind you that the DVA is a separate authority, not a city entity. In fact, commission minutes specify that no city funds could be used for the project. As to direct costs, in August 2006 email from Marty Sterling, who kept the Acorn records for the city, to Carol Hennessy states, "I am requesting a total of $31,000 from the Acorn Foundation for the relocation project. This is less than we had originally discussed, but we were able to work with the contractor to reduce some of the costs. The remaining funds will come from the DVA in the amount of approximately $108,000. The rest of the costs CE Gleason is donating." The Romy document and Commissioner Peruch's presentation on January 11th appear to add costs to the $108,000 DVA agreed to, but I could not find any record of this in the DVA minutes cited. It seems likely the DVA's $108,000 budget encompassed the design and the landscaping costs. The entire cost, from Marty Sterling's email, appears to be $139,000, and Carol Hennessy was told that the fundraising, not the DVA, would cover repairs to the monument. I am appalled that you're disseminating inaccurate information to public to justify what you're wrongly planning for the Veterans War Memorial, and the city's unresponsiveness to request for accounting information looks suspiciously like a cover-up.
Hi, my name is Casey Tapia, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I work at Modern Skating Surf. We've got a great community of skateboarders, and we're just looking to bring people together, give ourselves a good community and some fun things to do, so I'd love to see it happen. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Benjamin Clark. I'm calling on behalf of the support of the potential of a Royal Oak Skateboard Park or a new Royal Oak Skateboard Park. I want to express my endorsement for it, letting you know that skateboarding is a very healthy activity, and Royal Oak has a wonderful park system. There's a culture and community that gets built around skateboard parks that is unlike anything else that I've ever experienced growing up. It is, it's a thing that kids will do independently, but also kind of like as a group, and they will, you know, socialize. It creates bridges amongst different social groups that would not otherwise exist. It's a, it's a healthy activity with everyone being stuck inside with COVID and, you know, having different precautions. It's one of those things that people can do safely, and even though, you know, much of the concern of COVID will be probably over before there's any park built, you know, we might not be over these kind of things. So I think, I think what's interesting that I've seen about being at skateboard parks is people, there's lots of new participants. They are interested, eager, and they're looking for a place to skate. A trip to Gary Park in Ferndale or of any of the many skateboard parks, you'll see that they're overcrowded, so there's a desperate need for more skateboard parks. And skateboard parks bring business into Royal Oak. People will shop, they will eat, families will come together, and it will be a huge benefit to the city. So I'm a strong supporter of Royal Oak building a new skateboard park. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Lewis, and I just wanted to leave a little message saying that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, and so have a good day. Thank you. Bye-bye.
This is Carol Hennessy from Royal Oak. I would like to thank all our veterans that have done so much for us, and especially now when they are trying to protect their monuments. We should be standing behind all of them. The mayor and the mayor pro temp misspoke at a commission meeting in January. The mayor stated that he and John Wenland worked together to get trees cut down by the Veterans Memorial because of the birds. That is not what happened. After John went to the mayor and the mayor didn't do anything, I went to the city manager and asked him. He didn't give me an answer. I went the following month and asked again, and again I didn't get an answer. I went a third time and still didn't get an answer, so John and I went to the DVA and asked them if they would cut down the trees because the birds had been so bad in that area. The DVA approved the cutting of the trees unanimously, and the trees were cut down within the next two days. The commission and city manager after three months didn't do a thing. The mayor pro temp said at the meeting, at the January meeting, that the new location of the monument will give access to the handicap. Where it is now, they can't get to the monument, mayor pro temp said. Apparently, the mayor pro temp has not been to the Veterans Memorial because we have handrails by all the stairs and a ramp on the west side that allows people in wheelchairs to go up the ramp to the monument. When we designed this location, we made sure all handicapped people would have access to the monument. We spent almost three years designing and making sure that this was the area that the monument should stay permanently. I have documentation to show that the DVA proposed this, and the city commission approved it unanimously, as well as our citizens when we had it dedicated. Also, the Memorial Society was told by the commission to raise the funds to pay for the move of the monument, and the DVA would do the landscaping. We raised that money, and the DVA paid for the landscaping, so I hope this clears it up. I guess our new manager doesn't believe in responding to residents. I have tried twice, now with no response. I hope the commission doesn't call us liars again like they did at the January meeting because they get the last word. We all need to get together and honor our veterans, those that paid the ultimate price, and all those that made it back home. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alex King. I live here in Royal Oak, and I just wanted to express my interest in the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I think it would be really nice to have something local, you know. The other skate parks in the area, you know, while they're kind of close, they tend to get overcrowded really easy, so I think just having a few spaces for, you know, skaters to go would be nice, just to kind of spread the wealth there. I'm a big fan of the memorial skate park that already exists, but those ramps are starting to fall apart, and, you know, they'll make it, and they're okay, but just probably not the best equipment for people to be learning on, and, you know, safety-wise, like it's fine, but just, you know, things get old. So, yeah, thank you.
My name is Nick Luxon. I'm a, me and my wife are 43-year residents of Royal Oak, and I'm speaking as a veteran and a resident of Royal Oak. Both my brothers and niece live here in Royal Oak also. They've been here over 40 years. I'm a member of the Military Order of Purple Heart, and I'm their rep, the VAVS rep, at Detroit and Ann Arbor Medical Centers. Detroit has 55,000 veterans. Go there, and Ann Arbor has 63,000 veterans attend. As you know, the American Legion, VFW, DAV, all our service groups from around here help the hospitalized veterans, the Fisher Houses, mental health programs, all our returning veterans. They're just so vital, and I just wanted to call in and make a plea that please do not move the war memorial. It's just a perfect spot where it is. My wife and I did enjoy Commissioner Peruch speaking fondly of her dad and his service in World War II, and her husband, and Mayor Fournier and his father's service. My wife and I also enjoyed the last meeting when all the people called in for the new skateboard park, which is needed, but we feel just as strongly about not moving the memorial. Like so many families, I've had five cousins, and both my wife's brothers served in Vietnam, and all the uncles near my dad in World War II, and our nation must always come back to support veterans that served and gave so much. World War II, Normandy, Battle of the Bulge, Jiuchima, Korea, Incheon, Pusun, Vietnam, Idrang Valley, Khazan, Dakto, Abu Ghraib, Hambur, Kandahar in Iraq, Afghanistan. These veterans that gave so much are what hold the fabric of our society together. Please honor the wishes of the veteran community and leave the memorial where it is. Thank you very much.
Oh, hey there, council. This is Slash Krueger. If you guys built a Royal Oak Skate Park, I would totally come shred with all my buds. I really hope that you do. It's great for the community, if you know what I mean. I used to live in Katte, where there's a skate park on every corner. It was always super sick. Thanks, council. Have a good day.
Hi, this is Lauren calling in, advocating for a skate park for Royal Oak. I believe this is the best space that kids can gather in a safe container to be outside, to be active, to be with one another in a respectful manner, and all of our communities need this. So get us a skate park, please, and thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Patrick Succi, and I'm calling to express my support for the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. I have lived in Royal Oak for three years and currently living in Huntington Woods, but it would be a huge benefit to me and a lot of people that I know. I think we'd spend a lot of time there, and it'd be a benefit to the community to have a place for kids to go and learn something that will teach them sticktuitiveness and how to overcome adversity and challenges, so that's why I am in support of the skate park project. Thank you, and have a great day.
Hi, my name is Edward Doherty, and I do live in Ferndale. However, I understand that Royal Oak is considering building a skate park that is similar to the one that we have here in Ferndale. I just, you know, my son, my 11-year-old son goes- Um, I just, you know, my son, my eleven-year-old son goes to the one here in Ferndale all the time, and it's been an absolutely wonderful place for him to go, especially during the pandemic, and I think the, uh, Sid, you know, Royal Oak could also benefit the health of your kids. Um, certainly, it's not my tax money, but I, I do, I would be very well-served in building that. Um, once again, my name is Edward Doherty, two-four-nine-nine-six-seven-three-three-eight, in case anyone needs to talk to me, and, uh, have a great night. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
My name's Ethan Zloski, you guys should build a skate park in Royal Oak.
Hi, my name is Richard George, and I'm calling to let you guys know that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, and if you need any reasoning, um, I could give you a mouthful on a hundred reasons why it would be beneficial for the city to put one in. Um, it would just bring so much business and people and culture to the city. It's, it's so needed, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chase, I'm thirteen, and you guys should make a skate park in Royal Oak.
Hello, I support the building of a Royal Oak Skate Park.
Hello, my name is, and I support the building of a park. I think it would be a great addition to the community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nathan Satuzny, and I'm calling to say that I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, and I think it would be a really good idea to build a skate park in Royal Oak. Thank you.
Hey, this is Keanu Oates, I go to school at Royal Oak High School. Uh, I really think there should be a skate park put in Royal Oak. That'd be nice.
Hi, my name's Cameron Schneider, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kakot, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park.
Um, I support the Royal Oak Skate Park community, and I think we should build one, with like a street plaza, whole bunch of rails, whole bunch of ledges, a lot of stairs, and yeah, that's what all my friends think, so please make it happen.
Hi, my name's Chad Beamer, can you build a skate park in?
Hello, my name is Jacob Biesler, and I support the Royal Oak Skateboard Project, or Skate Park Project.
My name's Brendan Mills, and I support the skate park.
Hi, this is Judy O'Neil, and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park.
Hello, my name is Aaron Peters, that's A-A-R-O-N-P-E-T-E-R-S. Um, I live in Oakland County, Bloomfield Township area. Uh, I'm calling because I was told about a potential skate park being constructed in Royal Oak. Um, uh, if I, if my voice counts, I would just like to put my vote towards a potential skate park in, in Royal Oak. I think it would be very beneficial for, uh, um, two large demographics being, one, um, you know, younger children from, ranging from six to fourteen, and then also from teenagers to young adults ranging from sixteen to thirty. Uh, I think it'd be a great healthy way, especially for the summer, and with, with the struggles that we've all experienced this past year with COVID, I think it's a great output, and it would be something spectacular for the younger audience, uh, to experience, and it would also incentivize more purchase and more money spent in Royal Oak. Um, if I could recommend anyone to do the job, I would recommend the people that constructed Riverside, which I believe that was a Tony Hawk project. Um, a concrete skate park in Royal Oak would, would do, uh, numbers for the city, in my opinion. I think, um, like I said, it would really incentivize many purchases within the city, and even, yeah, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Uh, once again, my name's Aaron Peters, I'm leaving a message on behalf of petitioning for the Royal Oak Skate Park. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Joey, and my daughter Patches and I support the Royal Oak Skate Park Project.
Hi, my name is Cameron Enright. I am a Oakland County resident, and I think Royal Oak needs to build a skate park. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Noah Zipser, and I just want to leave a message regarding, uh, supporting the Royal Oak Skate Park Project, and, uh, and, uh, full support of that. Thank you so much, and, uh, looking forward to having, uh, skate park in the near future in Royal Oak.
Hello, this is Mike Thompson, twelve-ten Irving, Lawson Park Homeowners Association. I'd like to ask that, uh, the commission please, um, approve item number seventeen, the award of contract to the Community Development Block Grant for Lawson Park and the South End Traffic Divertor Improvements. This is, uh, truly going to be a transformational project. The, uh, with the, the city's investment in the South End, along with private investment, it's, it's, it's very, uh, healthy for the area. It's changing over now. The Lawson Park redesign with the input and the advisory board will feature new trees and a new basketball court and, and renovated baseball, an outdoor fitness center, and a kids' play structure, and even a couple of barrier-free accessible parking spaces. So this is, this is long overdue, it's, it's a great investment. There's a, there's a lot of new, um, homeowners or, or apartment dwellers, condo owners in the South End, and a lot of construction down here. So this park is, is going to be very valuable and used a lot more than it is even now. The traffic diverters, the, the funds allocated for those, they're, they're old and decrepit. The, the new money is, is going to, uh, re-landscape them and integrate them. There's, there's five of them, and they're in strategic spots to divert the, the freeway traffic and downtown traffic from cut-throughs through the neighborhood, and we're anxious, as you know, we've been working with the city, some of you know, on, on these for some time. And also, the Harrison will be, uh, that's the sixth, but that's, uh, with private development, with the Harrison Two. So that, that's coming along great. And hopefully, with the, with the cost of construction and that, you can fit in the, the Franklin Park with the, with the tennis court and the, and the kids' play area as a, as a smaller project. So number one, in importance as far as our, our Lawson Park Homeowners Association, is the traffic diverters that we've been, we've been working with you for some time. The Lawson Park is, is just, uh, is so exciting to get that going, and also, finally, the Franklin Project. So I thank you, and, uh, talk to you soon.
Uh, hello, my name is John Galletka. Uh, it was mind-blowing watching the last city council meeting two weeks ago, watching you guys discussing wildly crazy costs at the downtown park, and the DDA seeming to pull out or not be in agreement. It was almost funny to watch, except it wasn't. It's profoundly sad. Now you have the issue with the veterans in the park. I look back at your planning surveys online, and in the two big surveys, nearly twenty-five percent of the respondents were adamant about not moving the memorial. Yes, the rest seemed open to moving it, but they weren't shown the plan view of the park you have online, with the memorial next to a busy sidewalk that'll have market days on it. Who, I wondered, were the ones specifically asking to move the memorial? In your three hundred pages of community engagement online, the fifteen hundred respondents, I found exactly four people asking to move it. One said move it, but ask the vets first, that didn't happen. One said move it to create green space, not hardscape, bad chance with the sidewalk replacing it. One said move it to Thirteen and Woodward, that's against the law. The only other one who specifically asked to move it was your old friend Ron Boji, as a stakeholder. Is this the same Ron Boji that's been a political contributor to the mayor? Yes, says his thousand-dollar contribution in the Oakland County election records? Could this be the same Ron Boji who got an extra five and a half million given to another city council? Yup, that happened. So why then were the vets purposely not engaged as stakeholders regarding the very space where their dedicated monument lies? In the months of community engagement, except with the vets, that shows quite a lot, but it certainly doesn't show good judgment. You should stop using that false number of the forty feet you say you want to move the memorial. If you measure the plan view of the park on the city website with its own scale, reference it with Google Maps if you like, the distance you are moving the memorial is seventy feet, center line to center line. Anyone can see that. Instead of pushing the vets around, you should thank them for wanting to pull your bacon out of the fire. Save the money from changing the memorial in that corner of the park, and use it for the rest of the cost overruns there. Thank you.
Greg Stanlho. Another Monday meeting. On Saturday, March twentieth, at the Royal Farmers Market, many of you so-called city officials who are up for reelection this year assisted in the coordinated effort to harass and intimidate veterans, and specifically a veteran who was attempting to collect signatures to prevent you from blatantly violating City Ordinance Number One-Fifty-Six that was passed in two thousand and seven with over ninety percent of the votes in Royal Oak. Mayor Fournier, Commissioner De Buck, Commissioner Colo, and others conspired to interrupt and block the said veteran from collecting signatures by sending over one of their goons to physically and verbally assault the veteran, and market patrons who were trying to sign the ballot petition to save the Veterans Memorial and not have you violate City Ordinance One-Fifty-Six. You will ultimately lie and say that you had nothing to do with it. However, understand, we have pictures and many witnesses, you didn't see us all sitting in the parking lot. We can place that perpetrator with all of you I just mentioned during, prior to, and after the various batterings that took place that morning and afternoon. You cannot, however, lie when there is a Royal Oak Police Department Case Number Twenty-one dash eight-seven-five-nine that is on record and awaiting investigation. The ROPD must move this case to the Michigan State Police for investigation, cannot be done locally for obvious conflict of interest issues, and to ensure the case is not undermined by the current mayor and commission wannabes. It's pretty bad, just when we thought our elected officials couldn't go any lower, a new threshold of low is established. Great job. I hope you all get what you have coming to you. Have a great evening.
Um, Mayor Fournier, members of the city commission, that concludes this evening's public comment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schwanger. We really appreciate everyone taking the time to call in, especially the people who made an effort to talk about what they wanted and not sling baseless accusations. That's always seems to find its way here by a few individuals that, uh, you know, seem to have guff with some of our decisions, unfortunate, and I apologize to viewers that had to hear some of that stuff. Um, but we are going to continue with our agenda today, so, uh, we're done with public comment, and that brings us to item eleven, which is approval of the agenda. Anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Prush? Oops, did we lose?
It's me again with the buttons. I make a, uh, approval that we, um, approve the agenda set forth tonight.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion on the agenda. Discussion, I'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Prush.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach? Commissioner Dubach, I, can I just get an audio? I didn't hear it, I'm not sure if there's something wrong with my system.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, heard it that time. Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we've established an agenda. All right, that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda to discuss separately? Okay, with no one requesting removal of anything from the consent agenda, we have the city commission meeting minutes from March eighth, claims from March twelfth to March twenty-third, approval of purchase orders, approval of proposed third amendment to Woodward Corners Plan Unit Development, Commission for the Arts Recommendation for Public Art Project at the Griffin, and then receive and file twenty-twenty Police Department Annual Report and the February twenty-twenty-one Investment Report. Is there a motion? Motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Any discussion on the consent agenda as presented? All right, with none, we'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach? Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was a little, little fast on that on and off, uh, trigger there. Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
And I do not see Commissioner Douglas, that maybe she refused herself, we'll find out. Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, um, so the consent agenda is approved. Um, is anyone else having trouble hearing Commissioner Dubach's, uh, vote, or is it, uh, okay, so it's not my system? Okay, good, just, that's why I, Commissioner Dubach, please be patient with me. Um, all right, this brings us to item thirteen, which is the Michigan Liquor Control Commission License Establishment, Mexar LLC doing business as Camilla's Mexican Grill, fifteen oh four East Eleven Mile Road, request to amend plan of operation. Um, I see Chief O'Donoghue is here, we should all feel safe, who needs Norton antivirus, and we got him here digitally to protect us, and also give us a, um, update on this item. Chief O'Donoghue?
Uh, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Uh, we did receive a request from Mexarachi LLC, uh, which does business as Kamalia's Mexican Grill, to change the current plan of operations. to change the current plan of operations. Specifically, they're requesting to add an outdoor service area and increase their hours of operation. They'd like to add the outdoor service area on the north side adjacent to Eleven Mile. This proposed outdoor service area will be located on private property and have seating for ten patrons. The applicants are also requesting to add two glass retractable garage doors, which could be opened seasonally, allowing access to the outdoor service area. The interior floor plan will remain unchanged. Pipe to can music will be played in the indoor in in the outdoor service area. The music will be restricted to a level that will not adversely impact neighboring or adjourning adjoining business property owners, and the applicants will continue to comply with the city and the provisions of the sound ordinance. The music will be turned down immediately upon request to the police department. Additionally, the applicants are requesting to change their hours of operation to stay open until midnight, Monday through Thursday, and two AM on Friday and Saturdays. Currently, they close at ten PM on Monday through Thursday and uh midnight on Friday and Saturday. Sunday hours remain unchanged. Uh this is a very well-run business and virtually no police problems uh at this establishment. If approved, the applicants will will have to comply with all planning zoning and building requirements and restrictions. Um and we have no objection to this uh proposed change.
Any questions for the chief?
I would predict, I believe the uh applicant was on the call earlier, but I'm not sure if she's still around.
The petitioner online still? If you'd like to to fill in any gaps maybe that the chief didn't cover or let us know a little bit more about exciting things to come. You were struggling.
Not just a few minutes ago. I don't know what happened to you.
No? We'll have to make do with the situation. Commissioner Dubbuck? Commissioner Dubbuck, we can't hear you. Try one more time. See if you unmute and you can get a pickup up. There we go. You hear words.
Yeah. I Fonzie'd it. Um shoot, no, I got distracted. What was it? Do we have a, is there a public hearing? Are we looking for a motion?
No, I don't I don't believe there's a public hearing on the um plan of operation change. There will be two other public hearings, three public hearings after this.
Okay, um so yeah, with no objection from the police department, you know, there's a tough times. We should be allowing business owners to innovate, experiment. So, you know, this is a great place. I very much enjoy their food, so I'm happy to move forward.
All right, we motion by Commissioner Dubbuck. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion. All right, I'll just add uh great food and, you know, a new way to experience it, so that'll be good. Um and uh so I guess I'll call for the vote at this time. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Uh huh.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Clear? Yes.
I vote yes. Okay. All right, if the petitioner's on and and you're having problems, um just congratulations. Uh we look forward to seeing the changes. And um you know, sorry, we can't hear a little bit more about it, but this is the world we live in right now, uh and we look forward to seeing you. Thank you so much. All right, this brings us to item fourteen, which is the public hearing of necessity, standard resolutions three and four for the special assessment paving a public alley west of Evergreen Avenue. And Ms. Donahue is there. She moved right to the middle. Okay, okay.
Hi, hi, good evening, everybody. Um yes, so tonight I'm bringing forward a um request to pave a public alley. It really just acts as a driveway access for a bunch of um properties along the rear yard. It's a pretty simple ten-foot wide alley just south of Northwood Boulevard and west of Evergreen Drive. Um so seventy-one percent of the property owners were in favor, and we've already went through the standard resolution one and standard resolution two at a couple previous meetings. Um so tonight, uh the appropriate course of action would be to open the public hearing of necessity. And then once that public hearing is closed, we have uh standard resolution three, which would deem this as a necessity, and then standard resolution four, which would set the date for a public hearing of assessment.
All right, any questions for Ms. Donahue before we open up the public hearing? Okay, with no questions, Ms. Schwanger, did we receive any calls related to this uh for the public hearing? Ms. Schwanger?
She just relayed, um she was on her other computer. There was not any calls.
Okay. Bring the discussion back to the side of the table. Um, Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of standard resolution number three.
Motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck? All right, discussion. Uh Commissioner Colo?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um I I just wanted to mention, uh Ms. Donahue, that uh you received an email from me from a resident who had questions about um uh the the financing of this. I just want to clarify too that this is a hundred percent finance at the will of the property owners, that there is no city finance behind this. Um and Ms. Donahue, if you can clarify that, but I appreciate you taking the email.
Sure, yeah, so this uh the district here has seven properties. Five of the seven use the alley as driveway access to their property. So those five will be assessed if this moves forward. The other two, um that portion of the assessment would be covered by the city, um unless they opt to build a driveway at some point in the next twenty years, then we would basically backbill them for that portion of the assessment. And that that's been city policy going back as far as I know.
Perfect, and which is a perfectly uh logical policy. We invest in our infrastructure, so thank you for clarifying that to the resident.
Motion on the table. Um, anybody else? All right, I'll call for the vote. Start with Commissioner Prush.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck? Commissioner Dubbuck?
Yes.
I did have time. Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? All right. So we'll see this back again for the assessments and and all the the kind of final parts of it. So um this brings us back to fifteen, which is the public hearing of substantial amendments to the Community Development Block. Did I miss something, Ms. Donahue? Are we?
We still need to approve standard resolution four.
It's standard resolution three, we didn't do standard resolution four, did we? Okay, all right. Um, Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of standard resolution number four.
Okay, we have motion by uh Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right, discussion on four. All right, uh with none, I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck? Commissioner Dubbuck? Yes, gotcha. Uh Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Bruce? Yeah.
I vote yes. All right, we got three and four, right? Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All right, Mr. Murphy, we have uh item fifteen here, which is the public hearing on substantial amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Planning Year Two Thousand Nineteen Annual Action Plan and Planning Years Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Twenty Consolidated Plan COVID Aid Recovery and Economic Security Act. Uh Mr. Murphy, you're pulling a Commissioner Dubbuck. You need just, we want to hear your lovely voice. There we go.
Uh last last spring, the City Commission uh the City Commission received notice of a special allocation of CDBG funds from the enactment of the CARES Act. And the Commission took action to appropriate those funds to several different projects, which include distribution of food, emergency food to those in need, providing hotel vouchers for the homeless and a rent and utility assistance program. Last fall, we received notice of a an additional allocation from the CARES Act and in its November ninth meeting, the City Commission uh passed resolutions to add that additional funding to those existing programs. However, there was a conversation at that meeting about the possibility of allocating some of the funds towards a COVID-nineteen testing program. And staff did at uh the Commission did ask staff to hold off on processing the approved motion the next meeting, December the seventh, to see if we received an application from any outside agency that would want to operate a COVID-nineteen testing program uh on the city's behalf. We didn't receive any applications, but staff was in conversation with representatives from Beaumont Health, and Beaumont Health has provided the city with a price proposal to operate a testing program. We traded some agreements back and forth with them and trying to come to uh a contractual agreement so that the City Commission could entertain that. However, at this point in time, we don't have that finalized yet. But if the City Commission does want to proceed forward with allocating some of these funds for a COVID-nineteen testing program, there is a suggested motion. Uh we do procedurally, under HUD's regulations, we do need to have some additional language, which is reflected in the draft modifications to the consolidated plan. We need to note that there is a need for testing in the community before we can then allocate federal funds to testing. So with this as a public hearing, uh I'm listening to all the public comments tonight. I did not hear any specific to this for this public hearing. There is a suggested resolution which would appropriate the funds to the three activities, existing activities that I had referenced, as well as the original dollar amount that the Commission talked about at the December seventh meeting, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a testing program. So if the Commission's in agreement to operate a testing program, this would be the first step, and we would bring forward to you in the future uh an agreement with a service provider to make that happen.
Questions for Mr. Murphy? Uh Commissioner Colo?
Uh this is as much of a question as much as a same as just, uh Mr. Murphy, thank you for working on this. I know that this has been a uh project you and I have talked a lot about. Um talk about this break at the table. Um I really appreciate your uh pushing and continuing to pursue this, um especially when it comes to the COVID-nineteen rapid testing. Um just yesterday in Oakland County, we had three hundred thirty-seven new cases of COVID-nineteen. At our highest point um since January, we're going, we're going straight back up. So this is clearly a defining that still exists. I actually spoke with the head of the Restaurant Association over the weekend, and she had asked about um if we're still moving forward with this. So it's nice to see uh that this is still something that's moving ahead. We still have people out there who need access to this. Um there there's a need for this. We have people who are working every day in public, and if we can prevent one of those uh someone who's out there from potentially going and exposing more people, it's it's worth its weight in gold, the salt. So thank you again for moving forward with this.
Anybody else? I see Commissioner Macy.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about the the amount. It's um my memory is that we were just throwing darts at a board when we said the now the amount the last time. And it feels a little bit to me like if that's the number we thought in December, it may not be the same number at the end of March when we have a quarter of the county now vaccinated. Um so I mean, my understanding is that this is for like a pretty small part part of the population that isn't able to access free testing in another manner. Um so I just, do you, I just, do you have any number from Beaumont? Then you can like any hint of a number that we can base this on? I hate to allocate this amount and then find out we don't actually need to use it.
This particular dollar amount, uh the original allocation that the city received, the City Commission awarded to to those three programs that I had referenced, you had also created a small business assistance program, and the amount was just over two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We had advertised it heavily, but there were other and still are other federal programs which um don't have as many strings attached to assist business, small businesses. And so we didn't have any interest in our small business program. And that's the dollar amount that was associated with it. There was the conversation of the logic associated with that dollar amount flowing to a testing program.
I'll follow up. So i-if we have that two hundred and sixty-five, we I I see we're shifting it from the small business, which wasn't really using it, to this allocation. Uh can you tell me about your understanding of the utilization of the other pieces that we've done? Are they also not being fully utilized? Or is there somewhere else that we need to shore up? I'm just trying to get my head around this.
No, I would say that we, the current dollar amounts that we have associated to the other three activities are plenty sufficient at this point in time. We've seen a unfortunately tempered interest in those three activities that I had referenced. We heavily promote them, but there's been a a tempered interest in them. So no, there there's funding available to for all of these activities.
Uh Commissioner Prush?
Mr. Murphy, uh the two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, is it one of those use it or lose it propositions where if it turns out that we cannot, for whatever reason, reach an agreement with Beaumont or we in Beaumont decide that it's really not needed right now because of the changing circumstances, the way the the cases are going and the way the vaccination rate is going? Um it will, we have an opportunity later on to to put it someplace else? Or is this kind of its final destination? And if we don't use it for this um program, if we approve it tonight, um then the money just disappears and goes back to Washington?
No, no, I I would uh clearly that we can allocate the funding to a variety of activities and always assessing the strengths and weaknesses of those and whether individuals are or businesses are taking advantage of it and adjust them as we see uh in the future. So we certainly, and and that's proof in the fact that the original allocation uh included two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for a small business assistance program that wasn't being taken care, uh wasn't being taken advantage of. So we reallocated it, and yet again, we're here to determine whether to break it into smaller bits and move forward to another activity of testing. So we we do have the opportunity in the future to to assess and reallocate if necessary.
Okay, great, thanks.
Anybody else? All right, well, while we're thinking of more questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Um Ms. Schwanger, is there any uh public comment for this public hearing?
There was no public comment called in on this hearing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Schwanger. So I will close the public hearing and bring the discussion back up to the side of the table. Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval of the resolution that's presented to us in this memorandum.
A motion by Commissioner Prush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo? So discussion. Okay, with none, I'll call for the vote. Start with Commissioner Prush.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Commissioner Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubbuck? Uh Commissioner Dubbuck, still, I don't know. I can't, I don't know what's going on with you. You gotta do your Fonzie slap again. There, we got it. All right, Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Can I vote yes? Okay, all right. This brings us to item sixteen, which is the public hearing of substantial amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Planning Year Two Thousand Nineteen Annual Action Plan. Mr. Murphy? Mr. Murphy?
This year's Community Development Block Grant Program includes $1.1 million for what we refer to collectively as our south end improvements. And that, those are improvements to Franklin Park, Lawson Park, and the nearby traffic diverters. Two weeks back, we had a bid opening, we, for, for prices quote for the, all the work, the bids came in significantly higher than the budget amount. This proposed amendment adjusts some of the funding and would allow for the city to enter into contract for improvements to Lawson Park and the traffic diverters. This, this amendment doesn't provide enough funding to also fund the improvements at Franklin Park at this point in time. The city commission will in very near future consider next year's CDBG budget, which this particular project can be given a high priority. And the contractor has indicated that they will honor their price quote for Franklin Park for the near future if we so choose to amend a future contract to include Franklin Park. So this procedurally, this would require the city commission to hold a public hearing. There was one public comment earlier with regard to the amendment and entering into contract. There is a suggested resolution which you'll note indicates changes in the budget to make, to make the dollar amount happen so that we can move forward with Lawson Park and the south end diverters at this point in time.
Questions for Mr. Murphy before we open up the public hearing. Commissioner Macy?
Um, it breaks my little heart that we're not going to be able to do Franklin because it's such a, such a great, well-thought-out design and I was really excited about it. So I was wondering, you know, we did just find out there's 30 million coming from the federal government to fill these holes and make up for some of these COVID-related increases in our costs. So I'm throwing it out there. Is it something that we can plan for now, knowing that that money is coming in? Or is that something we still need to put off for next year? So I understand that it would still be eligible for CDBG so we could use that for the funds for next year as well. But you also made the mistake of showing me all the other plans you had for CDBG funds. And so I want to do all those things too. So I'm just wondering about if that, if that money that we know is coming in the next month or so, if that can be used to supplement this amount. Maybe this question is for Mr. Brake.
So based on that, to use those dollars that we would otherwise receive grant funding for, it just lowers that, that dollar amount that we could accomplish over a period of time, if that makes sense what I'm saying. So i- if we're going to advance and use the American Rescue to forego something that we know that will be funded by CDBG, but we're just waiting another year, why wouldn't we look at the, the grant program to, in the next round of funding to complete the project? And keep in mind that the, the monies that we are receiving through the stimulus program, that's for a period of, of the three years. So if for some reason that it doesn't come through, I would be inclined to recommend that you look at that as a backup rather than expediting.
Mr. Murphy, show Mr. Brake all those great plans you had for the other parks. Try, try to convince him. No, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Brake. That makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Colo?
Well, as a resident South Sider here, once again, I know my neighborhood is extremely excited for all these additions, albeit a little heartbroken for Franklin. But the diverters have been a topic around my neighborhood for a very long time. To have them spruce up and improved is going to be very nice for this community. And Lawson Park just looks awesome. I mean, it's crazy, you know, it's an awesome new park. It's a great design. It's going to be a great boost down here. We heard a jury public comment today too. Mr. Murphy, I guess one question I do have. If it is Franklin is pushed into the next round, into the next round of CBDG funds, but let's say that happens and it's approved, when would it be improved? Would it be, you talk about potentially using funds starting in 21, uh, July of 21. Is that, so is there a potential this summer, we still see construction on that park too?
We've been in conversation with the low bidder, who bid on again, all three of the elements, Franklin Park, Lawson Park, and the diverters. We were able to obtain their commitment that they'll hold the price for Franklin Park for, their bid price for Franklin Park for a while longer.
Okay.
The hopes that you, in the, in the very near future, within the next few weeks, you see a CDBG budget for next program year that will include funding for Franklin Park. If that's the case, we would bring, your next item of business is to award the contract for Lawson and Frank, Lawson and the park and the diverters. We would bring back a contract amendment to include Franklin Park again, in the very near future. And the contractor would start work on Lawson Park and the diverse in May and June. If the budget includes it and you amend the contract to include Franklin Park, they'll simply parlay into working around the corner at Franklin Park as well.
Okay.
All three, all of the three original elements would be accomplished this summer and early fall.
Sounds good. I also saw all the cool things you want to do with next year's CBDG funds also. So it's, you know, it's going to be a hard pick, but thank you for bringing this before us today.
Thank you to the neighborhood for all the input too. I mean, I know Brandon, I'm, I'm a South Sider, not quite as South, but just that, you know, neighborhood and those parks are just right on the other side of Lincoln. And our family, we visit them from time to time and mostly keep an eye on Commissioner Colo. Make sure he's doing everything appropriately on the up and up, but.
And also, that trash you told me to pick up, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
You know what? You know, if a newspaper stays on your lawn more than two hours, Commissioner Colo, I consider it litter. So, you know, I need you to be more on top of that. Okay? But awesome neighborhoods, awesome investment, a lot of community input. I mean, you know, I'm glad to see that, you know, that this is a very well-knit community in the South and to see some of these things coming in. And, you know, a lot of communities across the state aren't as fortunate to have such an active association and to see this type of investment. And, and what's cool about it is, you know, we're talking about features for people of all ages, but a lot of stuff for kids. I mean, you know, the resurgence of families, you know, not moving to the outer ring suburbs, but staying right here closer to the, to the population is just really exciting and encouraging. So, you know, I can't wait. I mean, I'll be taking some walks down there and keeping an eye on the construction. It's going to be amazing. So much thanks to the neighbor, much thanks to Commissioner Colo too for, and Commissioner Macy for their work, you know, on the Parks and Rec and, and, you know, Commissioner Colo living in that area and being a strong advocate. So. All right. Um, any other comments? I'll open up the public hearing. Ms. Schwanger, are there any other calls outside of the normal public comment that would fall into this?
No, there was just the one that was in the group of public comment from the president of, of Lawson.
Yeah. Okay. Good. And I think that applied to this one and the next line item too. Okay. Uh, well then I'll close the public hearing if there's no other calls associated with this one and bring it back to the commission for questions or movement. We have motion, or we have a Commissioner Prush, let me not prejudge.
No, it's a motion to approve.
Okay.
It is presented.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner Prush. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo? All right, discussion. Mr. Prush?
Just very quickly, especially for some of our newer commissioners, this whole issue with Lawson Park and we started with the commission's decision to not remove the diverters a number of years ago and to keep them in place and to hopefully upgrade them. But it was city staff who were out there taking a look at the diverters and the parks that were immediately adjacent to a couple of them that actually recognized that perhaps if this was in a black grand area, it might be possible to accomplish two things at the same time, to connect the diverters to one of the parks and make it part of the park improvements, which is what is the case at Lawson Park. And then also do some other park improvements in the surrounding area, which turned out to be Franklin Park. So I think we owe a debt of gratitude to those city staff members, both of whom I think have retired by now, who put two and two together and recognize that we can use CDBG funds for this type of stuff and combine a diverter project with a park project and get it all done at once and really, really impacts the neighborhood. So a good project going forward, it's, it's been a while, it's been a number of years. The neighborhood has been vacation to get us this far, but it's going to look terrific when it's done. And the neighborhood will be thrilled. It will all be thrilled, but the neighborhood will really be thrilled.
Really good point. Mr. Colo?
You know, something I've never been able to do, I could add a little history to Commissioner Prush also there. Our original ask, our original commitment from the city on the South Side was $1,000 in DPS time to maintain the berms. So that's, that, that's where we started and we're gaining a nice renovation of them now. So there, like you said, there has been a long road to get here.
You guys are great negotiators. You took a thousand dollars and turned it into new parks and amazing diverters and negotiating with the Harrison to get a pocket park there and everything. I mean, it's, uh, it's really a testament to, you know, people coming together and not looking at these things as a problem, but as an opportunity. And, you know, and, and I got to say, I, it's going to be nice. It's going to be really nice. All right. Um, anybody else? All right. I'll call for the vote. Commissioner Prush?
Yes.
Commissioner Colo?
Yes.
Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right. Good. So that brings us to seventeen, which is to award, award of the contract cap 2160 Community Development Block Grant Lawson Park and South End Traffic Divertor Improvements.
Mr. Murphy? The action that you took, you just took allocates the now funding to for us to enter into contract based on the low bid response. Mike Thompson under public comment did an excellent job of indicating all the elements that will be included in Lawson Park, which does not include escape park component. Sorry to disappoint all the public, under public comment, but this resolution is suggested to enter into contract with the low bidder for the suggested improvements at Lawson Park and nearby traffic diverters.
Any questions for Mr. Murphy? Pretty straight and simple. Commissioner Macy?
I just want to say, just for the benefit of maybe the commission, that Franklin, losing Franklin Park means that we're losing, redoing some tennis courts. So I know this body's heard about tennis courts multiple times and that's one thing that we're committed to doing in the pretty near future. So the loss of Franklin, but maybe not the loss of Franklin, it means that we're not doing that in this action. And then I just was asking for Mr. Murphy, you made this sound like it was happening very, very soon. When do you think shovels will hit ground?
Uh, we've been in conversation with the contractor, will have to arrange, they'll have to place the order, which the, some of the park equipment has a 10-week lead, but they'll be able to do some site clearance and they anticipate that that will happen in early May. We'll certainly keep the public informed on social media and be doing mailers to the neighborhood as well.
Good. Any other questions or motions? Commissioner Colo?
I moved to approve the contracts as presented.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Prush. All right, discussion. Pretty straightforward. All right. No discussion. I'll call for the vote. Start with Mr. Colo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubach?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Now that time was strange. You, you showed mute to me on the screen, but then I could hear your voice, Commissioner Dubach. So go, go figure the technology right now.
Because I'm on twice.
Ah, very good. All right, there you go. I mean, once is plenty enough, but twice will take, Commissioner Dubach.
You know, Commissioner Dubach, this is a really nice chance to plug the fact the Barlow Public Library offers free Wi-Fi and Chromebook rentals if you ever need assistance with all the technology. Curbside pickup also.
And people are happy with it, according to the survey. Something to check out. All right. Um, this brings us to eighteen, which is the declaration and affirmation of local state emergency for the purpose of permitting the city commission and other public bodies of the city to meet by electronic and telephonic means. I suppose this is Mr. Brake or Ms. McLaughlin?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. As you know, the legislature adopted amendments last year to the Open Meetings Act to allow public bodies to meet virtually, such as remotely by video conferencing and telephonic means. The original authority extended through December 31st, 2020 in order for public bodies to meet remotely without stating a reason or for any reason. That authority was extended in December through Public Act 254, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. That permission or authority under the Open Meetings Act is scheduled to expire next week on March 31st. And there is presently no apparent end or, or relief from that sunset at this time. The Senate has introduced a bill that would extend that authority through the end of June. However, that the bill has been referred to the Committee on Government Operations, which according to the Michigan Municipal League Legislative Liaison is where bills go to die. The legislature is scheduled for a recess for two weeks, starting this Friday, and neither house is expected to take up that relief or that bill. So in order for public bodies to continue to be able to meet remotely, there must be medical reasons, persons away in the military or a local or statewide declaration of emergency or state of disaster. The governor and the state legislature have not agreed on a statewide declaration of a state of emergency and there are no presently pending orders or activities by Oakland County to declare a state of emergency. Therefore, in order for the city commission and other public bodies of the city to continue to meet remotely, such as we are doing tonight, the city would have to declare its own state of emergency in order to continue meeting this way. There are many policy reasons that support continuing to meet virtually and remotely. Specifically that there's no guarantee that the city would be able to conduct in-person meetings in accordance with the strict requirements, including social distancing and gathering of no more than 25 people at a time. Therefore, I have prepared a resolution declaring and affirming a state of emergency for the purpose of permitting the city commission and other public bodies of the city to continue meeting by video conferencing and other telephonic means for your consideration. And I recommend approval.
All right. Any questions? Mr. Prush?
I, I don't have a question, but I know that at least a couple nearby cities have already done this. I know that the city of Berkeley has taken the same action. And it, the problem is the 25 person maximum that can meet together requirement. You put together, if we were to have a city commission meeting, by the time you added up all of us and all of the staff meeting, it's the staff numbers that would be attending, we're getting up there close to that number and then there's just a handful of space left for public, public comment. So, or even just to observe the meeting. So because the 25 limit is, is just so onerous, it, it really is impossible, I think, for just about any public body to meet until that is significantly changed. So I don't think we have any choice.
I can't make the math work. It's simple.
Yes, I am a. Yes, I am aware of other communities um, that have also uh, declared their own state of disaster, um, including several that our firm represents.
Anybody else? Mr. Douglas.
Uh, all all the approval of the resolution is submitted.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. All right, discussion. Mr. Hunt.
I'm sorry, I apologize, this is just a question, is there a um, deadline or a sunset on this? Like, when do we say the local emergency?
The resolution that's prepared uh, extends the state of emergency through May thirty first. Um, we believe uh, in consulting with the city manager, we believed that sixty days at this time would be sufficient. Um, and if it needed to be revisited at the end of May, we could do that.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Anybody else? Mr. Macy.
Sorry, this is a question too. Are there any other consequences from declaring a state of emergency? So I mean, like, we're doing it for the specific purpose of the Open Meetings Act, is there other collateral consequences of arguing that?
Uh, no, it simply empowers um, the mayor to take certain actions. Um, it does have to be submitted to Oakland County Emergency Management Division as well as the Michigan State Police. Um, there are other possible, there aren't any other consequences, but there are other powers that can be. Um, effectuated if during the state of emergency. But um, you know, there are some hoops to jump through if you decide to do that. Um, and then the mayor has some responsibilities himself. Um, for example, reporting to the um, to the commission on uh, the effects of the state of emergency or any emergency actions that have been taken. But other than those, there are no other specific consequences at the at the present time.
Mr. Macy, I checked if you could order the vacation of your seat, and they said it wasn't possible, so.
That's what I was asking about, now I know.
Mr. Colo.
I I just wanna take a moment to recognize the solemnness of this occasion, I mean, we're issuing a state of emergency. Um, namely because the state legislator can't work together to do this on a statewide scale. Covid is deadly, it is dangerous, it's still out there, and we're just doing this to protect ourselves, to protect staff, and to continue government to be open and um, accessible to everyone. So I I I'm gonna support this, um, and I I just think it's worth the reflection.
That's a good point, Commissioner Colo, I mean, this isn't the first action we've had to take here, or other communities have had to take. Uh, to protect our citizens and to, you know, solve our own problems. Um, thank goodness, we have uh, a great um, leadership uh, in Oakland County with the the county chair and the county executive and the board and the health officials. And, you know, we do our best to coordinate and and, you know, I think people need to understand the dysfunction we see in today's political climate. And we see it here, I mean, listen to public comment. Um, you know, is really causing uh, you know, some issues that, you know, put public health and safety at risk. And I think, you know, um, hopefully, on the other end of this, there's a lot of lessons learned, and there's some change perspectives about how to work together. Because what's happening in, we 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 had to fix our own damn roads, you know what I mean? This doesn't just go back to Covid, this goes back to complete dysfunction, and and that's not a knock, I mean, Jim Ellison has been doing his best, but he's outnumbered. Um, Mallory McMorro has been doing her best, excellently representing our needs and interests, but uh, it's a good and fair point. And so our citizens know, I mean, this isn't something that, you know, we desire to do just to declare emergencies, but we have to keep you safe. We have to figure out how to solve our own problems a lot of times, um, get little help uh, from folks that wanna go on recess and and do whatever. And so here we are, um, we have to declare a state of emergency, and we'll get through it. Um, and make it work, and we'll keep everyone safe as best we can, and then, you know, we'll get the next hurdle thrown at us, and we'll figure out a way to jump over that too. We appreciate the work uh, Ms. McLaughlin, that you put into this and 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 helping us, um, you know, circumvent a a pretty serious situation here.
Yes, of course.
All right, um, any uh, any other comments? All right, well, I'll call for the vote, we'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes.
Mr. Dubak.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Mr. Colo.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I vote yes. All right. That brings us to the last item on tonight's uh.
There is, excuse me, um, Mr. Mayor, there is one more uh, resolution that I brought uh, um, before. The commission tonight, um, it's a very brief amendment to the electronic meeting, uh, I'm sorry, the electronic meeting. Policy and procedure that was adopted back in October and amended once after that. Um, simply to reflect the um, additional amendments that were made at the end of two thousand twenty um, by Public Act two fifty four. Um, just to change a couple of the dates in the resolution, uh, reflecting the vote that um, and the reasons therefore. That was just taken on the resolution for a state of emergency. Um, so I have uh, offered another resolution to approve uh, a, an amended electronic meeting policy and procedure.
Right, and um, help me if um, did the last um. Uh, resolution that we just passed, was that made for both of these resolutions as presented, or did we need to do those individually?
They were presented uh, individually, I don't know.
Yeah, I see there, no, I mean, I know, I see them presented individually, but I'm just trying to go back to the way I understood the motion uh, that I. Was it, did it capture both of them, um? Ms. Alice. Just so we don't screw up your life and job, uh, Ms. McLaughlin. Um, how did we, how was the uh, motion made uh, for the previous motion? Did it include the um, resolution here on the uh, policy and procedure?
That is the way I have it, but if she needs two separate motions, um, we could do it that way.
If if it is. If it is offered and um, seconded and um, voted that way, I'm perfectly fine with it. I just wanted to clarify to make sure they were both covered.
Oh, good, good question, something like this, don't wanna come back and screw everything up, you know, how would we come back and do it? You know, good, okay, good, so we're we're clear on there, thank you, Ms. Alice.
Yep.
If I don't check with her, I've been known to do things that create a complicated headache, so I always wanna look out for our excellent city clerk. Getting her on our, on my bad side, because I'm taking too many liberties can be problematic for my health, I'm just kidding, Ms. Alice. Um. All right, so that brings us last discussion item, which is the, or the last item on the agenda, which is the discussion and consideration of candidates for the second round city. Oh, I see Commissioner Dubak with his hand up, um, Commissioner Dubak. One of your, one of your microphones has to work now, they can't.
I got it, I'm sorry, Mayor, this is somewhat related to the last item, but um, and it's kind of in the vein of. Now I'm getting feedback, is that me?
No.
In the vein of, you know, uh, extending some of these, you know, special actions that we've had to take, uh, you know, because of the pandemic. We did receive a lot of uh, inquiries today about the space rentals in the downtown, I know it's not specifically on our agenda today. Is that something that we need to take action on?
I'll put that question to Mr. Brake, or Commissioner Prush has some thoughts on it, Commissioner Prush?
I I apologize, I did not understand the question.
Yeah, I didn't either.
I believe Commissioner Dubak's talking about the restaurant utilized parking spaces downtown.
Well, okay.
So so I guess Commissioner Dubak, your question is, uh, given the uh, relational nature of the emergency orders that we pass. There's some things that may be expiring or that we may need to address to extend that in order to provide relief to um, those independent business owners uh, in the downtown area, correct?
Yeah, just given that, you know, for the same reasons that we are are, you know, thinking, continuing to meet virtually and taking whatever precautions we need to continue to do that. Uh, for the same reasons, some of the these uh, privileges that we've granted uh, to local businesses need to be considered uh, for extension as well, so.
Is Commissioner Prush?
I I'm not so sure that Mr. Brake received the same emails that we did. While we're talking about our businesses, restaurants primarily, who've been using the parking spaces on the street for service patrons. Um, a lot of them have the tents up, um, but that expires relatively quickly. And what they're asking, at least in terms of the restaurants that we've received emails from, is that be extended? Um, that I I don't think anyone suggested necessarily an end date, perhaps somebody said the end of the year. Um, but I think it's supposed to expire at the end of April. And so what they're looking for is an extension, given the fact that the pandemic conditions are certainly improving, but they haven't gone away. So that's what the issue is, is whether or not the city would consider extending um, the use of the the parking spaces for. Restaurants that are adjacent to them, I don't think that's anything that we can do officially tonight, because we have that resolution. Um, but that's something that we've been asked about, and so maybe if we could have it um, on an agenda, perhaps at the next meeting, or at least sometime before it expires at the end of April.
And I, and I wonder too, Commissioner Prush, if I go back and it's been a while. What um, powers we gave to the city manager and to the police chief to, you know, make an administrative call on that as well?
Yes, yeah, yeah, the whole package and stuff that goes with it.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe Mr. Brake, you could take a look at that, and if there's action by this commission, or you feel that maybe your position is out of sync with. You know, ours, or or you have some new ideas, um, we could bring that back, um, you know, at your discretion to the. You know, based on what Commissioner Dubak and Commissioner Prush have have discussed.
Okay, no, we can bring that back at the April twelfth meeting.
Since we are on the topic of emergency orders, thank you, Commissioner Dubak, for bringing that up. Okay. This will be like my ninth attempt to get to the last item on the agenda tonight. Anybody else before I get there, because I feel like I'm, you know, jinxing it every time, I'm looking at you, Commissioner Macy. All right, so we'll, we'll head now into the last agenda item, I, at least that's um, scheduled on the agenda tonight. Which is the discussion and consideration of candidates for a second round city attorney interviews.
Okay, uh, and so I can take up that that uh, topic and and make the introduction. So uh, last Monday, on March fifteenth, um, the mayor and city commission conducted four interviews of candidates. Uh, all of which were excellent. And um, it was discussed at that meeting that there would be additional deliberations to narrow down the the candidates. In discussing this with James Fratino, with the Gov HR, who is assisting us with this recruitment. Um, in consultation with him uh, himself, and as well as uh, I am recommending that you narrow down the candidate pool to two candidates. Or the other alternative, if you feel comfortable that you would just like to make a selection this evening. Uh, absent that, um, we're recommending that you narrow that down to two candidates. Uh, Mr. Fratino said comments contrary to that, but knowing um, in some of the discussions that I've had with several of you, but not with everyone. Um, that in the circumstances, it would be appropriate. If you do look at conducting another interview, we do have. Um, we're, we have two weeks uh, in between the next uh, commission meeting. So if you were to look at uh, March twenty ninth or April fifth, uh, those are respective Mondays. And uh, and furthermore, since we do have uh, if out of the circumstance, there's one candidate that's, that's not uh, in Michigan. Um, uh, the suggesting making some travel arrangements, so we could uh, um, meet with department directors. Uh, I would recommend that there would be an opportunity for meet and greet, at least with the senior management staff in person, that's something that we can accommodate. Um, via social distance, but for the purposes of the interview, the that could be continued in the Zoom format, since that was just approved by the commission in the. The previous agenda item, so again, uh, the two items, if you want to narrow down to two candidates or make a selection. If you do want to conduct another round of interviews, what date that we would be looking at. I I appreciate that we're uh, coming up to the Easter holiday, and depending on uh, school districts and whatnot. We're going to run up against a challenge of uh, spring break, um, either for um, uh, anyone that that. His spouse or or others that work for a school district, I know that March twenty ninth, that week is spring break for some schools. And I believe that for the Royal Oak School District, the the week following Easter is spring break. So I don't know if that creates any calendar challenges, but if you do conduct uh, those remote meetings, that if, even if someone is out of town, we could still conduct the the interviews. So throw that out as a suggestion for you to narrow this down and uh, to aid in the um, uh, selection of a, of our finalists for the city attorney position.
All right, since we're Mr. Brake, we'll go with questions first, we'll start with Commissioner Macy, Commissioner Prush, and then Commissioner Douglas.
My question, I was ready to go.
I, I don't have a question either.
Okay, Commissioner Douglas, do you have a question?
No, I have a motion. Um. Wait, you called me first. Well, uh, you didn't make a question, because you said questions first. But I'm here now.
Oh, that's a question.
Not, I got the floor, actually, um.
Douglas does have the floor.
I'm um, I'm gonna make a motion, and uh, if my motion fails, I my feelings aren't going to be hurt. But I have a feeling that if my motion does prevail, it will streamline the process considerably. Um, I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize our consultants, uh, Gov HR to extend an offer and enter into negotiations with candidate Aaron Lille. Um, and if I report on that motion, I'll discuss it further.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hunt? All right, discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Hunt, um, a- as Mr. Brake said, we had four excellent candidates um, to choose from. And um, I'd be perfectly, and and again, if my motion does not prevail, I'm perfectly happy to go forward with some additional interviews. Um, either of uh, additional candidates or bringing them in to meet with our department heads. But I do feel that Mr. Lille, uh, having gone back and reread the job description and the requirements, um, comes closest to fulfilling. The requirements of our job posting, um, I'm I'm gonna steal a line from somebody else and say he's he's um, Dave Gillum two point oh. We are used to an attorney uh, with the full range of experience, extensive experience in all of the disciplines of uh, city attorneydom. Um, and I think Mr. Lille has those qualities. Um, he's undergone some trials by fire in his community, he plays a role as he recognizes the importance of his role as an advisor to his departments. Um, he has experience in all of the legal disciplines uh, that a city attorney requires, planning and zoning, contracts, H R. Labor liability ordinances, Open Meetings Act, um, I mean, it's just uh, there's a real menu of um, uh. Legal disciplines that it helps to know something about, and I'll bet Ms. McLaughlin could chime in and and acknowledge that. I will also say this, I think Mr. Lille is such an excellent candidate that he may be considered by or being considered by other communities. If we now go forward with additional interviews, interviews with department heads, Easter, it's gonna be another, you know, three to four weeks before we convene. To discuss this further, and he may be out of consideration by then. Um, so it is for that reason that I am making this motion, and I welcome my. So it is for that reason that I am making this motion, and I welcome my fellow commissioners' comments.
What I'm gonna allow is I'm gonna allow comments on any candidates. Commissioner Douglas has made very bold motions in the past, and this is a sharp and bold one, and to the point. So what I'll do is, it's not just, you know, I'll, I'll take a little liberty here and allow folks to talk about whatever they want to talk about, about the process, not just about the motion. I hope nobody objects to that. Commissioner Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I concur with Commissioner Douglas. I believe that all of the candidates that we interviewed were stellar. They all gave excellent answers, and they all would be qualified. However, I believe Mr. Lille is, goes above and beyond. He's a little bit more qualified, he's done the job, he can fall right into the job, and I think that's something that we would need, rather than having someone who would have to come up to speed. He's done the job for a number of years now. He has stellar qualities and experiences. So I would concur with Commissioner Douglas.
Commissioner Macy.
So I'm gonna make an argument that everyone here, except perhaps Commissioner Hunt has heard me make before, which is that looking for Gillum 2.0 and looking for someone who's done the job before and is, and is great at it is the perpetuation of institutional sexism in this country. It did not say in the dot job description, you must have been a city attorney before. And by limiting the scope of people that we are considering to people who've done this for a long time, we are by the very nature limited mostly to men, because it is primarily men who are city attorneys around the country. So that's just something that I feel like we, we keep running up against here. And for all the, our talk about diversity, equity, and inclusion as a city commission, we need to recognize it when we're seeing it in ourselves, when we're not thinking outside of that very narrow scope. So I just wanna, I wanna make the argument again. I will say that I liked Mr. Lille just fine. I have no objection to bringing him back. If I had been allowed to make my motion first, my motion would have been to bring back Mr. Lille and Ms. Dillon, who I thought were both fantastic candidates. I had a preference for Ms. Dillon, but I think they were both good, and I would like to hear what I, our city employees have to say after meeting those two. I feel like we learned a lot in the city manager process when we heard from our city staff, who universally love Mr. Break. And I thought that that was very instructive for us as we were making our further decisions. So that's how, that would be my choice going forward. I will support this motion. That's, that's all I have to say.
Commissioner Dubac.
Thank you, Mayor. While I appreciate Commissioner Douglas's argument and Commissioner Hunt's, you know, preference for, for Mr. Lille. He isn't my top two, but I, I feel the same as Commissioner Macy. I think we, we had the same top two. Ms. Dillon and Mr. Lille, who I don't, I'm not prepared to vote in favor of an offer tonight. I prefer to do another round of interviews and staff interactions.
Commissioner Colo.
So I, I've had a hard time with this also. I've thought a lot. Maybe on the night of the interview, I would have made a knee jerk reaction and pick someone. But we decided to wait and go back and watch interviews again, and I am stuck between two candidates right now. I like Mr. Lille, I, I like everything he said. I think he had a lot of great qualities. I like Ms. Dillon a lot. I like everything she said. I think she has a lot of great qualities. I'm not prepared at this moment to pick between the two.
Anybody else? Commissioner Perush.
I think within the discussion tonight, after hearing what the rest of the city commission has said, I think the appropriate thing to do is to bring those two individuals back for interviews. I think we make our decision one way or another, and whoever it is we pick, it ought to be a unanimous decision. It was certainly that way with Mr. Break, and it's been that way with some of the other decisions that we have made that we consider super, super, super significant and important. And I don't think that would happen tonight if we allow this motion to go forward and and voted this way. So given the fact that there are commissioners who feel very strongly that they would like a second set of interviews, all these two individuals who I think are equally talented in so many ways, I think that's the appropriate way to go.
Um, I was sad. Okay, let's look at the positive here. We got at least, you know, it sounds like we all have a couple candidates that we can agree on as far as moving to the next step. So that's a good thing. All right, so we've narrowed the field. Again, I'd like to thank everybody for interviewing, and I think everyone did a, a pretty darn good job. But also, I will say that the two candidates we just, that have been brought up tonight is Dillon. You know, also was, was on my list and Mr. Lille as well. So I think, you know, I'm kind of with Commissioner Perush here, given that there's a little bit of, I mean, I, I appreciate Commissioner Hunt and Commissioner Douglas. I, I don't think they're wrong. I don't think they're right. I think that they, you know, make some very strong points, but just be, just for the sake of, you know, cohesion and making sure that everybody feels comfortable in the route that we go, and that whoever ends up getting the job feels comfortable that, you know, they got a, a look from every commissioner, maybe a second time for some of those that want a second time. I, I think, well, I don't think, I, I will be supporting, so I won't be supporting this motion, but I'll be supporting a second look at both of those candidates. I think Commissioner Douglas is right, there's a real risk. Mr. Lille could bail out of the process. I, I think that's a very real risk. I think he does bring a tremendous amount of experiences, and as do I think Ms. Dillon. So I think just as, you know, thinking about the long term, that we're gonna work with this individual, whoever we hire for years to come, you know, just to make sure we're, we're all on the same page and, you know, the decision is confident. You know, I'll support going a second round, I guess, after hearing from my, my colleagues. So. Anybody else? That's not a knock against any candidate whatsoever, at least the way I'm positioning it. Okay. All right, well, we'll start with the vote. Now, this is a motion to prepare essentially an offer for Mr. Lille. I suspect if it fails, then a motion would be needed to invite two candidates back for second interviews. Okay, so I'll call for the vote. I'll start with Commissioner Perush.
No.
Commissioner Colo.
No.
Commissioner Dubac.
No.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And I vote no. Okay, so that brings us to, okay, I'll, I'll look at Commissioner Perush. She's got her hand up.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we bring back Susan Dillon and Aaron Leo for second interviews.
A motion by Commissioner Perush is our second, second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on this one. Commissioner Colo.
So to Commissioner Douglas's point, we are in a time crunch, I, I believe, and we have talked about how Easter is coming up. I guess I would defer to some other commissioners, potentially Mr. Break. I don't know, especially if we have a candidate who's flying in out of town, if it's necessary to host the in-person meeting greet. I don't know if we could do that expeditiously enough to make a decision. I presume we want to have this interview done and a decision made at our April 12th meeting, correct? So that, yeah, Mr. Break, your thoughts on how we could potentially get in an interview and a meeting greet? Because I, I do agree with Commissioner Macy and everyone else that the, the meeting greet with staff is, is important.
Well, conceivably, if you schedule a special meeting, you could make a decision that evening. You don't necessarily have to wait until the next following meeting. So I, I would also throw this out to you. Let me work with, with James on that, that's fine. If it's not possible, we'll, we'll, we'll do a, a virtual or, or remote meeting, meet and greet. The, the bigger question is, does March 29th and April 5th, depending on the availability of the candidates, does that work on your calendar? So those are the next two Mondays respectively. We will obviously, the 29th will be given higher preference. And it's, we, we can speak to that in a little bit, but just, you know, kind of keep that in mind of what James and I, what, what we have to, to work with. So.
Commissioner Douglas.
Uh, yeah, I have a, a senior task force meeting at 7:00 PM on the 5th. So the only way I could do the interviews would be if they were earlier in the day.
Okay.
Commissioner Dubac. What, one of your nine microphones, if you could turn on, Commissioner Dubac, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, I can't, I can't guarantee that I'm available on the 5th right now.
Yeah, and I'm gonna struggle with the 29th.
Does it have to be a Monday?
It, it, it doesn't, but it, this, it gets complicated pretty quickly with having to rearrange other meetings and so.
Do the staff meet and greet on the, on the 29th? I know you said you wanted to do it on the same night, but if we're trying to be faster, can we do that the 29th? And then have ours another day?
Yeah.
Well, i- if that's the case, you do ours on the 30th. You know, we're flying somewhere. I guess we haven't really hit if we're flying Aaron in or not, but if we're flying Aaron in to be on the 29th, can we host a special meeting on the 30th then? You know, and we'll probably have to bump as, you know, another board.
Guys, what I want to do is, you know, we do have a, a motion on the table about inviting the two candidates back. I think what we can do is, once we get through that motion, we can talk about the logistics maybe, and if there's some other motions that, you know, I don't want to overcomplicate this. So if the decision is those are the two we're gonna invite back, then let's talk about what the plan is after. That way, it's a little cleaner if you guys are okay with that. Okay, so are we, any more discussion on the motion that's on the table about bringing the two back? All right, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
And although yes, okay. Now let's talk logistics. So we have a couple things, I think, Mr. Break, we have to cover. Did we do it in person and virtually? And then what are the dates? And then how do we fit in the, the staff meet and greet if that's your suggestion?
So the staff meet and greet, I, I can figure that out on my end. There's another date that's wide open that we don't have to kick out anyone. It's Wednesday, March 31st. I'm getting some thumbs up. I can't see all the screens.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I might be tied up. Depends on the time that we do it.
Okay, all right.
Particularly taking a couple vacation days that week. So, but if I can accommodate it, worst case scenario, you know, I watched the video after, and then, you know, you know, unless you make a decision that night, and then, you know, I'm left out of it. But I'll see what I can do to make it happen, but that's, but don't worry about me, we'll figure it out.
Okay, and I'll work with James and correspond with you via email, and we'll we'll sort out those details.
Okay. Can't, can't be like, you know, stock trade. I can't, you know, give a proxy vote to somebody, unfortunately, right?
Uh, probably your interim city attorney will, will give a, a no to that.
All right, well, I'll do my best. I mean, I just, depending on the time and logistics, you know, commitment to my family and I, you know, we all have to, you know, at some point prioritize our families. So I want to make sure if there's something specific going on that night, you know, I can cancel with them. So, but we'll find out more.
Okay.
All right. Good, so we'll bring in two back, two excellent candidates. About the, the, the face-to-face versus, I have no problem, obviously, doing this all you know, in a digital setting. My biggest concern would be, Mr. Break, is that we don't make one candidate over another candidate. If one candidate is willing to come face-to-face, does the other candidate, if they, for whatever reason, health reasons or whatever, doesn't feel that comfortable, you know, we don't want them to feel like they're at a disadvantage or anything versus the other candidate. Or if one can't, you know what I mean? If one can come because they're local face-to-face, and the other one has some flight issues, you know, like, you know, I don't know what all their personal stories are, preferences are, but, you know, I don't know how the rest of the commission feels. But I feel safer personally doing it, you know, remotely. But I wanted to throw that out there in case that's, you know, a stick in the mud for people.
Yeah, I will say that, we, we'll make it work. So no, I have a pretty good idea based on, on the discussion that we've had this evening, so.
Perfect. All right, we trust your leadership.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Colo.
Mr. Mayor, do you envision that on the night of this special meeting, we will also select the city attorney? Or is your preference to wait until the April 12th meeting?
You know, I, I think that if we know, you know, at the end of it, I don't know what, I mean, I'll just give you my personal opinion. I don't know what we would be able to, unless there's like significant follow-up between the meeting on the 31st and the 12th. I think if we have a really good feel and the second round of interviews gives us a really solid basis to make a decision, then I'd say we move, and then we allow the city attorney to negotiate with the candidate. So maybe by the 12th, we actually have, you know, a contract available to approve. That, I think, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, sometimes we gotta make quick decisions. I don't know, dragging these things on are sometimes problematic, especially when you're dealing with personnel. Commissioner Perush.
I, I personally think that waiting until the 12th would be very, very risky. That's a long period of time. That, that's a very long period of time, and considering how long we've been in this process already. And I take to heart Commissioner Douglas's comments that it's very possible that we could lose somebody, even one of the candidates, if we wait that long. I think we should come to the meeting on the 12th, prepare to do the interviews, and then discuss afterwards and make a decision. It's only two people. It's not like we're choosing between the 12.
Yeah, so I, I just want to point out that, the part I was trying to get to was, I just, I want to make sure that the meeting is noticed correctly. So we have that option to make the higher end of that meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll include that, that heading, a, and at least give you the discretion. So we'll say a possible selection. So it, it, it won't pigeonhole you. But in furthermore, you know, we'll, we'll have even an agenda item after that, if you decide not to make a selection, so you can deliberate on next steps.
Now, what happens if one of the candidates pulls out between now and the 31st?
We'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there, so.
Yeah, I think we'll just still have the meeting, right? We can still use the time to have some.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yep, we don't have to cancel the meeting.
But I, I've spoken to Mr. Fratino about that, and he feels comfortable and, and I do as well to make that recommendation of the two candidates, so.
All right, anybody else? All right, well, good work, team. I mean, it's been a while since we had a pretty lengthy agenda that had a lot of meaningful things on it, all the way from, you know, dealing with COVID issues, to making our parks better, to, you know, selecting a city attorney. I mean, you know, we turned through a lot tonight, so great work and appreciate all staff preparation for this. And Paul, you guys did a great job. Alice, everybody else. Chief Donahue, protecting us from viruses on the computer, this police presence. Anybody have anything else they want to bring up, or we can entertain a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Dubac.
I will move to adjourn.
Yeah, we motion by, a second, second from Commissioner Perush, discussion on the adjournment. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. We'll start with Commissioner Douglas.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dubac.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
Commissioner Colo.
Yes.
Commissioner Perush.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a great night. Stay safe, stay healthy, remain vigilant. We're gonna get through this, get your vaccination, keep your masks on. We're all one team here, and we'll see you again next time. Take care. Bye. We're gonna get through this, get your vaccination, keep your masks on. We're all one team here, and we'll see you again next time. Take care. Bye.